Good evening and welcome to the May edition of the Eva Neighborhood Board. My name is John Clark and I'm currently serving as a chairperson. We will start with our rules of speaking by Mr. Alex Gauss.
Aloha, folks that are here. Aloha, this is your community public forum. Your input and cooperation are really appreciated. The Eva Neighborhood Board is an advisory board and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep the reports less than three minutes and presentations under 10 minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. The board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. Now, the board may take action on an agenda item. As required by the state sunshine law, specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, eight of this 11-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you, Alex. Moving on, introduction to the board members, beginning with Tomai Wright in the physical meeting space.
Good evening, Mitchell Tannanis.
Evening, Alexander Gauss.
Evening, Isaiah Kirton.
Good evening, Zach Espino.
Good evening, Susan Gorman Chang.
And I believe we have three board members meeting in the virtual space. If you could introduce yourselves.
Hello, John Rogers.
Aloha, Mike Plowman.
Corey Rosenly.
We'll start with Mike.
Evening, Mike Plowman.
Corey?
Aloha, Corey Rosenly.
Thank you, gentlemen. From here, move on to public safety first responder reports, beginning with Honolulu Fire Department Duty Officer. Either, take that one.
Good evening, everybody. From HFD, Eva Beach Fire Station, fire fighter fire, so acting captain this evening. We're just gonna go over some of the questions and answers that you guys had from last board meeting, along with some statistics and then fire safety message. So, carrying with that, the statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographic area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov, under the News Info tab. If you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. First question that we had was, are there any ordinances allowing fire vehicles to park in reserve stalls? As far as for parking, fire apparatus at emergency incident, HFD does not require any reserve stalls. The responding units will place their apparatus in appropriate location, including fire lanes, to ensure personnel and equipment can get to emergency to effectively mitigate the incident. Question number two, does HFD issue citations for possible hoarding houses? HFD does not conduct fire inspections inside of private dwellings, but we will encourage the public to practice good housekeeping to prevent fires and help fire escape. For more information relating to hoarding, please go to the HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov and click on the fire and life safety, then home and family, finally, housekeeping. Question number three, what are the number of e-bike accidents involving pedestrians? For e-bike accidents stats, please check with the Honolulu Police Department and/or the Emergency Medical Services. Question number four, due to concerns about what happened to Lahaina, is there a fire risk analysis on the surrounding area of the former site of the Pacific Tsunami Center? HFD has been in contact with the Hawaii Department of Hawaiian Homelands, DHHL, since it took over for the former site of the Pacific Tsunami Warning Center at 91-1281 North Road, and will continue to discuss with DHL about mitigating or reducing fire risks to the surrounding areas. Our Eva Fire Station personnel have also pre-planned the parcel in the past, and the HFD continually prepares for wildfires in all areas of Honolulu County. In addition, the HFD with the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization recently completed an island-wide risk assessment that will be utilized in the HWMO's Community Wildfire Protection Plans. Some of the statistics we had for April's alarms was we had one structure fire, one brush or wildland fire, four nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and nine activated alarms with no fire. The nuisance fires would be anything that includes rubbish fires or outside of structure or actual vehicle. Emergencies responded to 169 medicals, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, nine motor vehicle crashes and collisions, zero rescues, mountain rescue, zero ocean rescues, and two hazardous materials incidents. Our fire safety tip for May would be home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often distinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spread quickly, fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having a working smoke alarm, fire sprinkler, and practice fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinance relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov. If anybody has any questions or anything for me?
Any questions from members of the board in the physical space? Board member Alex?
Thanks for that, that report and getting back to us on some of those questions. I was curious on the tsunami center area that you said was evaluated, is that report that a fire assessment available that we can... So, the only reason I'm asking this is because that tsunami center, well, like half of it is DHHL, right? The other half is still federal lands. I don't know to who exactly. I forget. And like, I agree, like the Hawaii Fire Department is always ready and we support you guys a ton. I'm just curious, like, on the evaluation, what was the outcome of that? Like, is that area considered super high risk? I live right by it, right? So, I'm just curious on what the... I was the one that brought up that question. So, if that assessment is available, I'd really like to see it and how that area was end up being categorized.
Okay, I can pass that information up and we can try to address it in the next meeting or try to get you some type of answer for that.
Any other questions from members of the board in the physical meeting space? Any questions from members of the board online in the virtual space? I have a quick follow-up, and apparently this is a very difficult question to get an answer to. I was the one that asked question number three regarding the number of...
E-bike accidents?
Well, accidents, motor vehicle crashes involving e-bikes. And the answer that you just gave was check with Emergency Medical. So, I've actually been on the scene of a couple e-bike accidents here in the Eva area, and I noticed that the fire trucks are usually the first to arrive on scene. So, when you say check with Emergency Medical Services, to whom are you referencing?
According to this, what they told me was the Honolulu Police Department or EMS. So, I know right now on our Reports tab, we don't necessarily have a categorization to list it as e-bike. I think they're kind of working on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they're gonna... That's something they're gonna come up with in the future. But I can try to see what they mean by that and follow up with that.
Thank you.
On where you would get that information regarding that.
Okay, I'm a firm believer in it takes a village, and I think the more attention we put on this collectively as a village, I think the better the outcome will be. And we got HPD, we got city council, we got the new law, we got HPD enforcing the wheelies and just bringing more awareness overall and keeping it at the fore. So, if you could just, you and the team could maybe just kind of reference that, if not every month until we can finally break out some of that information.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. I'm sorry, question for members of the community. Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to Honolulu Police Department Duty Officer.
Hi, good evening, board, Chair. Corporal Corey Makino, District 8, Community Policing, along me with Sergeant Fumi Maroka. Online is Lieutenant Marino Carrera. Stats for April, motor vehicle thefts, 15 in the district, seven in the area. Burglaries was 19 in the district, six in the area. Thefts, 121 for the district, 28 in the area. An outright entry to motor vehicle, 32 in the district, 11 in the area. Call to call for service for the district, 8,441. For the Eva area, 3,925. Speeding citations, 109. Moving violations, 776. Parking, 309. Total citations issued, 1,205. And to follow up on your e-bike questions, we do have the statistics that HPD started documenting any e-bike-related incidences. So, for the month of April, for the district, we had eight, sorry, 18. Eva alone, we had 14. So, 14 of the 18 was in the Eva area. Two of those were motor vehicle collisions with injuries. Four of those reports were resisting orders to stop, which traffic stops were issued and bikes refused to stop, so the reports were made from that. And the rest were police contact, warnings given, and so forth. To follow up with that, we also did, the district did night ops during the month of April, in which one juvenile was arrested for reckless driving. Multiple citations was issued and six e-bikes was confiscated, in which the parents were called and returned back to the parents. Other than that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Questions from members of the board in the physical space?
When you guys confiscate an e-bike and then return it back to the parents, is it like second time we keep it and pound it? You never get them back or?
Right now, it's, we're not allowed to technically take it, it's more so take it for safekeeping, so that the juvenile does not ride back on the e-bike. Citations are issued to either the juvenile or the parents as well. But as of right now, we're not allowed to actually confiscate the entire bike itself, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the board in the physical space? Board member Gauss?
Yeah, thanks for that report. Are you guys planning to continue collecting those data?
Yeah, as far as I know, when we do our reports now, there is a tab that officers can click where if it's an e-bike-related case, so it pops up in the stats.
Our trustee neighborhood assistant has asked me if you could repeat your rank and name.
Yes, Corporal Corey Makino.
Makino?
Makino.
Can you spell, please?
M-A-K-I-N-O.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of the board? John?
Yeah, hi, thanks, Officer Makino. So, I guess my question is more informational, so to understand for the whole community, to understand where electric bikes, which is an e-bike that, you know, has pedals, you know, so electric bike, not a motorcycle, we know motorcycles aren't, electric motorcycles aren't allowed anywhere. We learned that last meeting. So, for this, so I'm specifically talking for the Eva area, like Fort Weaver Road on the northbound side of North Weaver, Fort Weaver Road has a shared use path, sidewalks, right now the HRS only defines sidewalks, so it has a wide, 10-foot wide paved sidewalk, basically all the way into Eva Beach to Farrington Highway, Kapolee Parkway has the same, has a long shared use path all the way into, all the way to Kala Aloa, essentially. And I'm just thinking, some of the other, we have a bunch of other shared use paths or sidewalks, wide sidewalks, 10-foot sidewalk. And so, are electric bikes allowed to ride in sidewalks and what are the rules? And are there gonna, any plans to ever have signage? I've actually asked HDOT on the state roads, but I think if HPD asked the same question about having signage for some kind of rules of the, to let people know what the rules are, how you ride a bicycle on a shared use path or sidewalk, so that pedestrians and everyone can enjoy it without any safety issues. So, can you, what's the rules for Eva Beach basically on all our wide paths?
As of now, I believe that they are allowed on sidewalks that are regulated. E-bikes, the one with pedals that go, the wattages below the 750 watts, as long as they go within, I believe, 10 miles per hour on sidewalks. As far as the signage, I can't answer that regarding the signage of bikes, yeah.
Okay, so basically Fort Weaver, Kapolee Parkway, and any of our wide shared use paths, their bicycles, which is the e-bike is classified as a bicycle, are allowed on those as long as they follow the 10 mile an hour rule. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Board member Tannanis?
Just to dovetail off of what John just said, but is it one way or both directions? You know, depending on traffic, because when I was growing up, I got ticketed for riding on the wrong side of the road.
Yes, in the bike lanes, I believe it has the directions of you're supposed to be going with traffic, yeah.
So, I'm just saying on the sidewalks, does it matter? Because you're on one side of the road and it's going north.
Not to shout on the sidewalks, but once it's on the road, they should be going with the flow of traffic.
Okay, thank you.
We can find it for you.
Any questions from members of the community in the physical space? Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, can you step up to the mic and state your name? Don't forget to smile, though. You have to smile first.
Hello, I don't know if you mentioned, but I was wondering how many traffic citations did you send to court? And do you know what the court did about that? How, more than a pat on the back or a pat on the hand?
This is regards to the...
Traffic citation.
The traffic, the total traffic citations. Once they're issued, then it goes to court. I don't have the data on the dispositions of the showcases.
Thank you.
Any questions from members of the community in the virtual space? Seeing none? I have one question and it's a little delicate, okay? First of all, thank you for all that you do. And you guys understand HPD in general is very understaffed, some of you guys are overworked to a certain extent. I had some community members ask me to bring this up, that there seems to be a certain reluctance sometimes to arrest people. We had an incident that happened at one of the local schools where a woman was not clothed. And HPD declined to arrest her, and she may have been homeless, but the... The challenge that I have with it as a member of society is if I, or if you, sir, were to go down in your underwear and, you know, do something with your underwear other than wear them, you would probably be arrested. So, what is the policy with regard to arresting houseless individuals or personnel that seem to be having mental challenges? Why would HPD decline to arrest them?
Depending on the circumstance, I guess, would be one if they do have a complainant of if they were affronted or harassed, willing to come forward and go to court regarding this case, press charges against the person. Yeah, most times the person would get arrested. As far as that particular case, I'm not really sure the circumstances surrounding that case. But yeah, in most cases, if, yeah, if there is a person that comes forward willing to be the complainant attesting that they felt alarmed or harassed by this person's actions, then we can take actions and place that person under arrest.
Okay, this has happened, I've been approached a couple different times for this. Someone stole a bike one time and HPD was on the scene, they got the bike back and they said, no harm, no foul, but the person stole the bike and HPD didn't want to arrest the person. But they, eventually the person was ticketed, I believe, and they actually went to court. But in the case of someone that's naked, why would... That seems to be pretty cut and dry, but from what I understand, HPD said that it's not a crime to be naked. Is that true?
I guess depending on the circumstances, yeah, like if a person felt affronted or alarmed by the person's actions, yeah, it's longer the category of like sexual assault or open looniness, yeah. But based upon the officer's, I guess, discretion to, yeah, about the person's state of mind.
Okay.
It also depends on whether somebody anonymously reported something and they weren't the reporting person, they weren't willing to provide a statement. If, you know, if we need to, if it's a crime, then we need a complainant, yeah. So, if nobody was willing to be a witness and provide information, then the officer would use their discretion and, you know, handle the case. If there's somebody that reported a crime and they're not satisfied with the outcome, they can always ask for a supervisor and get clarification on, you know, why the case wasn't handled the way they thought it should be handled, so.
Okay, in this case, there was a complaint, they did want the person arrested. So, I just wonder what the general rule was.
We can get specifics, we can look it up and see what happened and explain it to you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sir, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, Fumi, I just wanna get a little bit more clarification, because a while back, you guys know the individual, she was from the west side, always coming to our community naked, sitting in the parking lots and whatnot. So, what had happened was at that time, when I was there, HPD officer called the ambulance to get her assessed and give her an option, either go into the ambulance or get arrested. So, she went in the ambulance, but hearing that the person was walking from the school to the store, and then, you know, the officer decided not to arrest. So, I guess we're gonna have to look a little bit more into them, because that's what was told to me, that you guys usually call the ambulance, because most time it's a situation that we, so that they can making sure. Of course, the male officer don't wanna show a naked lady in the back of his car too. That I can understand, but usually they would call the ambulance or try to do a little bit more, because we want them off of our streets, and I know you guys are shorthanded, but I probably could just try to get more clarification for the community.
It's a matter of, you know, arresting them for a crime, or if this person is in need of like psychological attention or something like that, then, you know, it's up to the officer's discretion what the best course of, you know, to take the case.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, moving on to, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Moving on to Eva Weed and Seed Unit?
Oh, yeah, I'll be having the Weed and Seed as well. So, as far as Weed and Seed, the only thing we have right now is the 21st Annual Cooking Class would be sponsored by the Weed and Seed. It's gonna be free for all Campbell's High School students. For more information, they can talk to their counselor about enrolling. I know spaces are limited and they've already been accepting applicants. It's gonna be from June 9th and it's gonna be for about six weeks. It's gonna be hosted by Darrell Shinogi of Roy's Colina. Other than that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Excellent. Do we get to sample the wares or anything like that?
I wish I could too.
Okay, any questions for regarding Weed and Seed from members of the board? Board member Gauss?
Yeah, I just had a quick one. I know Officer Payton was talking about retirement, or is this like a change of the guard or you're just here today?
Right now, just filling in, but I know he has some big shoes to fill, so I'm trying to follow his footsteps right now and see where it goes.
All right. Any questions from members online? Any questions from members of the community? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Moving on to board administration and planning. It's not on the agenda, but I wanna make a quick announcement before I forget. Board member Tannanis always reminds me, remember to vote. Voting is now open for the 2025 Neighborhood Board Elections. You can go online, many of you, if you are registered voter, you probably got something in the mail to do that. Approval of regular meeting minutes, barring any exceptions, we shall consider them approved. Any exceptions? Seeing none? Okay, we'll consider them approved. Moving on to presentations, we have three presentations for you this evening. Beginning with Westlock Affordable Housing Project. And seeing our guests in the physical meeting space, not seeing them online. Okay, there was a request to have an additional presentation, the one we discussed in our last board meeting. Board member Gauss, remember the gentleman with the fishery, the fish farm? Yeah, Neil, yeah, so he wanted to discuss the resolution. So, you provided him a template or something like that and...
Yeah. I gave him copies of previous resolutions if he wanted to use it as a template.
Okay, and Susan, you wanted to review the EIS. Have you had time to do that?
Yes, I have. I read and renewed it, yeah, I mean, read it and reviewed it, yes.
Okay. Okay, if any of you would like to make the motion that we have that presentation, I'm not sure if Neil is online. Okay, but we'll move on with the other presentations first before we move to that. Proposed bus service changes for the opening of the second phase of Skyline. Come on down, you are the next presenter on the Eva Neighborhood Board, 23.
Pete Corino from Cedar County Department of Transportation Services. As many of you may know, we are planning on opening up the next phase of Skyline on October 1st of this year. And that phase will go to the airport, Pearl Harbor, and Middle Street, terminating at Middle Street. As part of that effort, we are making bus service changes. We are proposing changes to the bus system to align with the new Skyline service. We have Katie Cullison here from our consultant, PBR Hawaii, who's going to go through a deck and will be happy to take any questions. There's a comment period in the email for any questions that still come up at this meeting. So, without, hand it over to Katie.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, board and community members and our elected representatives for being here tonight and folks online. My name is Katie Cullison. I'm a planner with PBR Hawaii, we're a consulting firm based here in Honolulu, and we're supporting the city and county of Honolulu with community engagement as they work on considering some changes to bus route systems. And we're gonna take any notes on questions that you have tonight and offer you, if something comes to mind later, an email address where you can leave comments after this presentation. As Pete mentioned, there's an open comment period until July 15th. And at this time, these are just, we'd like to just share some route changes that are under consideration and we're looking for community feedback. So, as Pete mentioned, the Skyline next phase opening is scheduled for 1st of October. That's very exciting, because it's gonna connect more people to employment centers, which is important. And it's, thank you. And in alignment with that, the city is contemplating some changes to bus routes, particularly commuter routes. and in alignment with that, uh, the city is contemplating, uh, some changes to bus routes, particularly commuter routes, uh, to improve service, uh, to the commuting public. So what you're seeing on, um, this slide here is, um, the extension running across the top, uh, to, to, uh, Middle Street, and then the text, uh, below, uh, you're seeing that your, the Skyline hours are being expanded significantly with earlier stops and, uh, earlier starts and stops each day, um, and again, these changes are being made, um, changes are being made to bus routes, consider it anyway, to accommodate the rail extension, um, and overall the bus hours, uh, freed up with, uh, some of these changes are increasing to improve, improve services to riders. And what you're seeing at the bottom of this slide, there's a lot, this is kinda text heavy, so I'll walk you through it, kind of the second to last set of bullet points, uh, talks about some bus service changes that some have been implemented, uh, in March of this year, that's, those are listed as complete, phase one. I'm gonna talk through some of the phase two, uh, changes that are under consideration that we'd like to get feedback on. And then I've got a couple of slides at the end of the presentation that are sort of previews of additional changes that, uh, we're considering. As a result of all of this, I just wanted to make a point that overall bus hours under the proposed, uh, changes would actually increase by approximately three percent. And when you calculate that out over these three phases of openings, that's like forty thousand hours of bus service, um, additions, uh, through, through making some of these changes, so. Moving right along, this next slide that's up on the screen now, uh, shows some of the routes that were adjusted with the, with, um, back in March. So what you're seeing here, um, are routes that were restructured to provide service to Skyline and that a new route was added to get riders from Eva Beach to UH West Oahu. So we can move on to the next set of slides, which are the, um, series that, um, are under consideration uh, right now for some changes, so you can move on to the next slide and then the following one. This is kind of an overview graphical representation of how the system can work, uh, how Skyline can help to pair up with, um, rapid bus, or rapid buses, uh, that make limited stops, uh, that, you know, service, uh, commuters. And then you have your neighborhood feeder buses, all those routes, um, are maintained for localized service. So the intention with this type of, uh, of planning is to make those commuter routes more reliable and faster for the people that choose to use these routes. So the first one that I'd like to share is on the next slide, and, uh, this slide and, and the one following is kind of a before and after, uh, series. Uh, this shows the current A line, uh, you can see on this slide that it extends all the way to Pro Ridge Station. And then on the next slide, you'll see how the A line is under consideration to terminate at Lagoon Drive. Uh, the hours of service are proposed to be expanded, you can see that in the table, um, that's probably easier for people that are at home, or at least to my eyes, um. The hours of service are proposed to be expanded to run later into the night, and there's no change, uh, proposed to the frequency of service, so. It's example like this, when lines like this are truncated, it frees up more bus time and more bus service, uh, to be used elsewhere on island and to serve, uh, growing communities and, and commuters, um, elsewhere on island. So you can move on to the next, uh, set of, um, considered changes that we'd like to get some feedback. Uh, this one is, uh, proposal to discontinue what's now the Route twenty and add something called the W line, be a limited stop service. See the, the dash line on, on this slide, it's green dash line on my screen, which represents the existing Route twenty, and you can see how it has some redundancy with, uh, Skyline, and then as you scroll to the next slide there, you'll see that the new W line is proposed to connect with Skyline at the airport. And then in the written text on this slide, you'll see that the hours of service are expanding to add earlier mornings, but then the service would continue to run late into the night to support people who are working in Waikiki. This proposed change also includes a greater number, uh, greater frequency of service, giving riders more flexibility in planning their commutes and fewer stops overall. The slide that follows, uh, this one is just some closeups of, uh, some detail that, uh, we're considering for this W line, some changes, um, in that box in the top center of the slide, uh, with how it loops through airport vicinity and then, um, downtown. This limited stop W line is under consideration to run along Nimitz rather than, uh, Beritania. So just trying to move commuters, uh, faster, um, through, um, through our community. So then the next, uh, slide that I'd like to share with you all, uh, relates to a proposed, um, oops, I got ahead of myself here. A proposed new line, uh, U line, uh, this one, uh, on the screen here shows a new route that's proposed to run from Ma Puna Puna to UH Manoa on weekdays, so this would allow anybody to jump on Skyline, um, on the west side and then hop on this limited stop bus that would get them to the Manoa campus. And the fre- frequency is proposed to be every hour with extra trips during the AM and PM peaks. So the idea here is to, um, provide greater service to UH Manoa. Uh, relieving some traffic and helping people get where they need to go. Um, you can move to the next slide. Another route under consideration, so this will be another before and after kind of series. This one, uh, that's proposed is a discontinuation of Route three oh three with a new proposed Route three thirty one. Uh, this serves joint base Pearl Harbor Hickam, and, uh, what you can see on this side is the gold dash line is the three oh three, which is under consideration for, uh, being discontinued, and then you can see the redundant sections on the next slide. They, you know, are removed and, uh, you'll see that that service continues to, uh, joint base Pearl Harbor. So you can go to the next slide and it'll show how that is proposed to be restructured, um, the three, three oh three to the three thirty one. On the next slide, you can see, um, changes to some existing routes that are proposed to connect, uh, to Skyline at Lagoon Drive rather than further out at the stadium. Um, so that's, uh, the forty, forty-two and fifty-one would just be rerouted to connect to Skyline a little closer to town. Information, Route fifty-one would also stop at Pearl Highlands, so it'd be servicing that facility as well. Uh, the final route that is under consideration right now with the October one, Skyline opening is just a service route change, uh, service frequency change, rather. A Route forty-six, which runs from Kapalae to UH West Oahu is right now running at a every ten minute service. And the, we're considering changing that to every fifteen minutes just to satisfy the, the man that's been shown that, um, route. So then, uh, the last thing I'd like to share are just some previews of some other contemplated changes. Um, again, this is a kind of overview graphical slide that, um, shows how those limited, uh, stop commuter buses can feed into, um, Skyline. And so then the first preview that I'd like to share with you is on the following slide. It's the C line that currently runs all the way from Akaha into town. Um, instead, the concept is that it could just run to the UH West Oahu Station where the commuters there can, uh, get off the bus, get onto Skyline, get out of traffic, um, for the rest of their commute, and so the idea with this, uh, concept is that there, it would cut trip time for commuters that are coming from the west side with, uh, fewer stops, out of traffic, direct routing, um, you know, via H one until Skyline and a higher frequency overall, so. Preview on that one, interested to hear feedback. And then, uh, the last, uh, route that I'd like to share with you is a proposed E line, this would be a new Maupira Makai, uh, service, um. The E line, instead of running all the way into town, uh, could connect Wahihua to Eva Beach. Um, and everybody in between then can connect up to Skyline and move, uh, east or west, uh, from there. So another preview, interested to get some feedback on. The final slide here is the Mahalo slide and, um, a place where if you have additional comments, uh, if you're feeling shy tonight, you can, um, send an email, uh, and we'd appreciate comments by July fifteenth, uh, so that, uh, the DTS staff can consider them and incorporate them into, uh, making, uh, improved service prior to the October first opening, the next phase opening.
Thank you for that very informative presentation. Any questions or comments from members of the board in the physical meeting space? Isaiah?
Um, this is more of a, I guess, an item of feedback, um, but this C line that's feeding into the US, uh, UH West Oahu, that's, that's gonna bring so many people into this one station, which is already servicing a lot of Kapalae, so I do have a little concern that that station is gonna just be slammed. So it would be nice if there was maybe two lines, like a C one and a C two, maybe, that went to, uh, Ho'opili or, but I can already predict, you got all the people from the west side and all of Kapalae going into, well, I mean, I guess they have East Kapalae, but more or less that, that West Oahu one is gonna get, I, I just imagine it's gonna be slammed, so.
Yeah.
You might wanna think about a way to alleviate some of the pressure there, but I, is that a concern you thought, that anyone thought of, or, um, you, you don't think that's gonna be much of an issue?
I will definitely, um, raise the issue with the rest of the team. Uh, I think the idea is that, um, a number of these routes would be connecting at one place to make it most flexible and convenient for people to transfer and, and at, at a single location, but, uh, I think it's a valid, um, concern and I can definitely take it back to the team.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, before we get to Susan's point, uh, I would also like to underscore his point that East Kapalae is really Eva Beach in many areas. So. So, uh, Susan?
Yes, question, um, first of all, I am thrilled that it's gonna be going to the airport, I can't wait till October first when my son and all of our friends from the continent come and visit us because we're within walking distance of Ho'opili, of the train station, so we will be so much easier to get from the airport to our house, so really appreciate that. And then the, um, the station at, um, the, the West Oahu, I, I'm assuming that all the parking, there's plenty of parking in the UH West Oahu Campus four, um, the train station and they have no issue with people parking there, right? It never looks full to me, I live pretty close to there. And that's, that's where the parking is, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's capacity at that station, the, the line is built for a lot more capacity than obviously what we're handling today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or member else?
Yeah, so I actually, I, I guess it would be nice to see that presentation up again, just because I wanted to show on the slide, so, I, I don't know, I know you're, you're, you know, pushing forward and these are taking comments for the next two steps, but I actually have feedback from some of the people where, where I live, including my wife, who takes the bu- bus quite often, and what you see, you know, I'm, for you guys, I'm looking at that one that kind of shows the overview. And the problem is, is that for, if you live here in Eva Beach and we live at the very end of that rail, it takes you three buses to get into Kapalae. And so a lot of people are like, we wanna go in a couple of, there's food there, they're shopping there, but there's no direct line. There's that big gap right between, and so it takes you three buses to get into downtown Kapalae. And, and so that, that, I don't know how, I, that got overlooked and in the previous, uh, you know, collection of feedback, it never, it just never jumped out, and then I've been hearing that from some of my neighbors and stuff, and so I don't know if that's feedback you can get. I don't know if it's too late at this point, but it seems like it would make sense to have a route that goes straight to Kapalae.
Thanks, it's good for, good feedback.
Let me just add that, that is one of the things we're looking at, where we can put additional connectivity when we kind of free up bus capacity from going into town be- and getting stuck on H one traffic. There's other locations where we can add additional connectivity in the suburban areas, that's one of our goals.
Any other questions from members of the board in the physical space? Seeing them, John Rogers?
Yes, hi, um, thanks for the presentation, um, man, I'm, I'm like Susan, I'm really excited about all this, um, getting to the airport, I just spent a hundred dollars for Uber ride back to Eva Beach from, uh, a couple of months of travel. Um, so I'm gonna be happy to be able to take the, um, train, um, Skyline, uh, back to here. So my question is though, when, I've been following, uh, this since the very beginning and, um, there, when, when they first started discussing this at some of the initial meetings, they talked about having, um, changing the routes within Eva so that Eva, Kapalae, we could get, there would be a circular route going every ten minutes, so that folks in Eva, all the way down Eva Beach, Old Eva Beach, where Alex lives, could get to the, uh, train station every ten minutes, so, um, in order to get other places, and, and I'm just wondering, is that, um, is, is that still happening in consideration, or is that something you need comments on further? Thanks.
That is something that we're considering for the E, right, to increase the frequency on E, since it's not going all the way into town. Uh, uh, it's proposed not to go all the way into town, uh, with the opening of, uh, the second phase of Skyline. So, uh, the idea would be to take the savings from not going all the way into town and put that into higher frequency here in Eva.
So you, we're, we're gonna have circular routes within Kapalae and Eva to, to get to the, it's train station, because that's, that's how they explain, I mean, the first days of this, uh, when Hart first came together, they, every ten minutes, you'll, you'll be able to get, you know, from West Lock where I live, I'll be able to get on a train and, you know, I live a mile from either one of the stations, and I'll be able to get to the Waipahu Station within, you know, wait ten minutes no more, get to the Waipahu Station and be on the train, um, you know, and it'll be like twenty minutes, um, maximum, because that's gonna make, that's the huge, that's what's gonna make it ridable, is being able to get from A to B quickly, have a, have a fast bus going around Eva Beach, you know, cir- circling Fort Weaver, just constantly circling Fort Weaver. So is that a plan or do we need to comment on that?
Yeah, that's the plan and your comments and support of that would be appreciated.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Trey, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, uh, appreciate this detailed, uh, presentation, a couple of comments. I'm most excited about the U line, uh, I work at UH Manoa and, uh, getting there is a nightmare in the mornings and it's mainly just because, uh, the exit backs up. Uh, twenty-three B backs up all the way on to the H one for all the students who are trying to park in the morning, so I think I see that the U would bypass that completely from the end of the, uh, phase through the Skyline and that sounds great to me. And also you, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be, uh, particularly fast service in the morning, because door to door for me, going to the U, uh, from Eva Beach is something like an hour ten at, uh, at peak time, hour ten, hour fifteen, um, so, you know, there's lots of room to improve. Um, I do have a couple of concerns. I'm most concerned about rerouting the C and the E before the Skyline makes it all the way into town, or at least closer to town, than, um, than phase two. I've ridden the E all the way into Waikiki on several occasions and, uh, it's about an hour forty, an hour forty-five. Many people commute on the E, they're going into their jobs in Waikiki as, you know, service workers in the hotels there, and if they were to lose that and have to transfer twice instead, and, you know, that really the transfers weren't, you know, a perfect handshake, um, they could, I think they could really end up in trouble on their commute, it could easily be over, over two hours with the, with the two interchanges. So I just wanna flag that, um, for our constituents specifically on, on the E. I like the idea eventually of the E, uh, going into Central instead on a, on a very frequent basis, um, but without that last component, right, getting right into town on the Skyline, I worry it's gonna ruin a lot of people's, uh, a lot of people's commutes. And I would expect there to be many people who were similarly situated on the C, although I can't speak to that directly.
I would say we share your concern on that, uh, we had originally thought that maybe we would do both of these for October first. But exactly to your point, we said, let's get the downtown, um, up and working, get, make sure that's working well. And see if we get those transfers in good shape before we do anything with the C and E.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the community? Please step up to the mic, state your name, remember to smile.
Hello, Kevin Tonganon, resident of Eva. I have same concerns as Trey, but instead of the UH Manoa, it's the downtown Honolulu component. Because Route E, if it changes, then it would still take, it would take about three connections with this plan to get to downtown Honolulu. Because you'd have to take the E into a station, take the Skyline and then take, I guess, another bus from Skyline to, to, or from the Middle Street Station to, I guess, Honolulu, downtown Honolulu. So is there a way to like, make sure that the phase comes later for the change of the E? And then if the 91 or 101 gets affected, because I know those are the most direct buses, but they only go during the peak hours.
Yeah, appreciate the comment and the transfer. It's actually, what we're proposing is to do it at Lagoon. Cause that's a little bit easier to get on Dillingham and H1 than at Middle Street. So, but yeah, understand your concerns there.
I believe we had another question over here from member of the community. State your name. I saw you smile already. You got that one. So.
Yeah. Hi, Jim Hayes. I'm here for the next presentation, but wanted to ask a quick question. Do you have an estimate of the time savings? Like if you do what you're proposing for, you know, doing that double transfer basically? And do you have an estimate of the time savings when a commuter would do that during sort of the peak hours or mid hours? Just wondering if there's an estimate.
Yeah, we, we look at that and it's a comparable time in general. There's also a reliability factor because it's a more consistent time because you're not in H1 traffic. But perhaps the biggest savings is the wait for the buses on either end because their frequency increases. So that's really where it's the not in vehicle time where you save most, right? Because the bus, you're not waiting as long for the bus to come.
Thank you. Any, oh, just Senator, I'll let you be last. Any members of the community online? Nothing online? Senator?
Okay. So I don't know how long you was working on this. I was on the board. I've been on here probably before John and anybody when we worked at East Kapolei High School, it was only on paper. But you guys are leaving out to the community and I'm very disappointed. You guys was going to take away routes. You guys are going to add routes so that the bus and people in Hawaii will have jobs. Taking away that E route is going to kill my community, literally. Because they all work into the service industry. By telling them, hey, right on, you're going to go over there to West Oahu and you're going to go do this and do that? Negative. Negative. So I'm writing one, I'm going to let you know, I write in one opposition and be calling the mayor. At this, what you're talking about right now, you need to scrap it. You guys are supposed to add about what Mr. President Membregau said, right? Because when you do that, you're taking away from my community. You guys are supposed to add routes like John said, every 10 minutes. That was the bus you guys are supposed to add. Not taking away any routes from my community. And you want to bring people from Akaha to Kapolei and then Wahihua to Kapolei? Wow. Think about it. So right now, this idea you guys have, it's a fantasy. And my community is not going to buy it. I want to tell you right now, I'm not buying it. Because it was promised to us, because you know how I know? I applied for the bus company 20 years ago. That was the anticipation that was going to add routes. So we get people to work. Because this thing costs billions of dollars. But you're going to tell my people that they gotta go transfer, 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 when they can barely already afford to go to work because they get paid minimum wage? Yeah, you guys saying, oh, it could be free, it could be free. How long is free? Oh, because you can buy a bus pass. You guys seen the bus pass lately? My community cannot handle this. You guys need to scrap that. Not even saying that you guys are going to have an October 1st thing. I'm telling you right now, scrap it because it's not going to work. But they just said now, 100% true, everybody here. You guys are not seeing it because you guys don't live here. I see the E bus in the morning when I sign wave, E bus, when I go to work, same thing, crowded. Now you're going to get all of those people going to Kapolei to jump on one rail, to go that side. Yeah? That's not going to happen. These people not only when I have hard time, a lot of them is elderly. They know one way in, one way out, to go to the bus, go to their job. Everything is done and they've been doing it for decades. You're going to disrupt my community's way of life and quality of life. Because somebody in the bus company, not bus company, excuse me, in the city decide they like cut corners and save money. No, how you save money? It's cut government spending. You don't do it upon the people. So I'm going to tell you right now, I'm in opposition to this and I hope everybody on the board is in opposition to, because it's not going to help the quality of life. My neighbors is 60 plus years old, catch the bus at four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning. And you're going to tell them, but it's okay. You guys going Kapolei. Yeah, come over here at four o'clock in the morning, go see these buses run and they will sit over there and see if you want to go over there Kapolei, right? West Oahu campus, not the crack center because that's Eva Beach. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. So as we wrap up this topic, I do want to thank you for coming out, taking our input. Obviously a lot of passion and, and thank you for being receptive. I think the, the board members and the Senator, as he, as he pointed out, you know, a lot to be said here, right? And, and we know these evolutions go on, improvements, pluses, minuses. But long time now, ever, you know, a lot of us have been on the board for a while and we've seen the attention flow to Kapolei. And we saw this coming a while ago. So if you could take those, those comments back along with some of the passion, that, that, that would be good. I do want to mention one thing. Dave?
Peter.
Pete?
Yep.
Okay. I was trading emails with, I, I thought a, a Dave Simpson.
Yeah, Dave, Dave from PBR. Yep.
Okay, okay. I would like to personally thank him for his patience. For those of you that don't know, there's a lot of conversation. Sometimes it goes along. Former Member Tananis was chair for a while. There's a lot of, a lot of requests, a lot of denials, a lot of negotiating that goes on. As Dave was asking to put this presentation on the agenda, I was asking him, what is the status of reinstating Kapalina service? So they talked about this and they said, okay, we couldn't really comment on that. But ultimately I did receive this email two days ago. Now just repeat, read it verbatim. Hi Chair Clark, DTS would like to request to be placed on the Eva Neighborhood Agenda in June's meeting to share updates regarding bus service in Kapalina Beach Homes. We plan to implement new bus service into Kapalina starting in August 2025, but are still working out the details of the service. We will be ready to share those details at the meeting in June. So it takes a village. We'll, we'll work through this and we'll get better. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
So yeah, for the request, what we was talking about, oh, Kapalina, the buses right now, they're only going to do probably two times a day. We had to figure out how we was going to do it. So they told me two times a day and they're going to see how it goes from there. And you know, it could be more because the ridership can be incredible, especially now that we have Section 8, you know, believe it or not, is renting in there. So we have a high, high capacity of kids that need to get on a bus and start walking the streets.
That was my biggest concern. So thank you, Senator. Thank you. Moving on to the third presentation.
Chair can ask a question?
Okay. What member Rosen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like the city and county to respond to Senator Pavelo's concerns. I'd like to hear their rationale and just to hear the response.
They've, they've left the meeting area, Corey.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Our trusted neighborhood assistant, Jeffrey, said he will include it on the mayor's report, Corey. So we'll make sure we follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, move on to our second presentation, Telecom Facility Planning Solutions Incorporated.
Should I, should I share, share my screen? Yep. Okay.
Yeah. And please keep in mind, presentations, we like to keep them under 10 minutes.
Oh yeah, mine's short.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Jim Hayes with Planning Solutions. I'm here to talk to you about a telecom facility project. And we're here because the project is proposed to be located on city and county of Honolulu land. And the use of government land requires certain disclosures and certain permits and approvals. And we have prepared a draft environmental assessment, which is available for review. The review period is open until May 23rd. And I'll show you a link on how to access that document at the end of the presentation. The proposed facility is located near the Eva Villages Golf Course parking lot. And so it's near Malaco Street and Tenney Village. Hopefully people can see that on the screen there. The purpose of the proposed telecom facility is to improve and expand wireless communication services in the region. And it is needed because we need to address coverage limitations in the area and serve the rapidly growing population in the region. It doesn't want to go down. Oh, all the way down. Okay, sorry. Now we're on right track. This is an aerial photograph that kind of zooms in on the location of the facility. And you can see it there just to the west or left of the golf course parking lot. And north of Malaco Street, the area is currently occupied by monkey trees and grass and dirt. Those trees will remain, so no substantial changes to the environment. You can see, if you look very closely, that some of the golf course maintenance crew drive their golf carts through there, just as part of their routine activities. They'll be able to continue to do that. There will be a fence, just fencing off a 40 by 40 foot area. So the facility is relatively small. And it will not interfere with golf play that's over further to the west. All right. Moving on to what is this thing going to look like? And this is a view, a photograph taken from Malaco Street and there's residences sort of just behind the camera there at the village. We're roughly 200 feet from the proposed location. And the monopole is simulated on the right side of this drawing. And the existing situation or condition is over on the left side. The monopole will be disguised as a pine tree and it'll be roughly 120 feet tall. The simulation, if you look really closely, among the branches of the pine tree, you can see three levels of cell phone antennas. The, the pole is designed to accommodate up to four levels of antennas. And in the rendering, again, if you look closely, you'll see that there's a fence around the 40 foot, square foot area, 40 by 40 foot area. And the fence will be surrounded by vegetation to further limit the visibility of the installation. Another rendering, this one's taken just outside the golf course clubhouse. We're now roughly 450 feet away from the monopole. And you can see that opposite looks a little better. Yeah, you can see it there among the existing vegetation around the golf course. This slide illustrates some of the similar facilities that exist in the region today. There are many cell phone antennas, of course, around the region. This one shows one, the one on the left is near the intersection of Retton Road and Fort Weaver Road. It's disguised as a palm tree. It's getting a little ragged, but it still looks okay. And then the one on the right is an antenna that's on the wastewater treatment plant, Honolulu wastewater treatment plant project site. And it's right there among, what village is that? I can't remember. Sorry. There are also many other cell phone antennas around that I'm sure people familiar with, including a Kapolei High School football stadium. So I just showed a few examples. This is the link to the environmental assessment. So you can use, there's the, the word link over on the right. And then this image will take you to the document as well. No significant impacts are anticipated related to the project. And as I said before, the comment deadline is open until May 23rd. After that, we'll prepare a final environmental assessment and then the applicant will move on to seeking a conditional use permit. So that's the end of my presentation and I'm available for any questions. So thank you for this opportunity to present the project.
In record time. Thank you, kind sir. Any questions from members of the board in the physical meeting space? Any questions from members of the board in the virtual space? Seeing none? Any questions from members of the community? Please smile and state your name, sir.
Put the arm, brush my teeth before I came. Anyway, you, you know what the problem that, that we having right now with these cell towers? It's not improving nothing. You guys keep saying, when you guys come to the community, all the beautiful ones that you show and you talked about, I've never really done anything besides make money for the people that putting it up. And again, and again, and again, when I was on the board, I still don't see a service package being offered, maybe to government at West Lock, my rented road, maybe, maybe the West Lock Golf Course, maybe Campbell High School. I don't know. But it affects all of us. Because again, we got to continue to look at it, the one on top, Fort Weaver Road. So we putting up all these cell towers, but we get at Polo Beach Park, animal services. Ever rented road, but a golf course in the back there, no services, right across the street from the treatment plant, no services. So who does it really benefit? Honestly, that's what I like to know. And you guys got to stop telling the community that this is going to benefit ourself, emergency, all these kinds of stuff. It's all hogwash. We don't have it. We still yet having less services. But I like know how much you guys expect to make? Or the people that making this thing, how much they expect to make by selling their antenna spaces there? We like, no, why don't you come back to the community and tell us when you sell each space, how much money you generate per year? And then that's a percentage that you should give back to the community. And I'm going to go check on every single cell site that we have in our community to ask them the same thing. Because you guys keep coming over here and telling us the greatest things of the world, how beautiful you're going to make it look. But then what is it for in the community? That's what we like. We tired of being taken advantage. So what is it for the community? Because I don't know what they giving to Campbell. I will find out. But you can find out from them. What you guys giving back to the community with these cell towers? How much money? Thank you, Chair.
So could we maybe get, maybe in a couple of months, bring some information back in accordance with the Senator's request?
I can make an inquiry. This, as I mentioned at the start of the presentation, this site is located on city and county of Honolulu property. The cell phone company will be paying lease rent to the city and county. The way that the city and county chooses to use that lease rent is beyond the control of the cell phone companies. So that's all the information that I have.
Okay. So yeah, so maybe we could, Senator, maybe we could ask Augie or Andrea if they could do a drill down. And maybe come back and, you know, it's good information to know.
Yeah, that, that'd probably be more of a question for the city and county that's negotiating the lease rent. I don't know that they're, right now, we're just preparing an environmental assessment. And I don't believe that there's been a lease agreement signed. So I think, I don't, I don't know that I'd be able to answer like a specific dollar amount. I just know that there will be an agreement and it will include lease rent.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for that. I have one quick question. You're, you're not the first person presenting on new cell towers in the region, obviously. I mean, at the last one, there were actually a lot of constituents from the neighborhood that were concerned with, you know, I, I'm not an expert on this. So, but the, I don't know what kind of waves come out of them about, you know, impacts to, to people and communities. And so does this EIS tackle that at all and talk or either support that idea or negate it or something through research, cited research or something like that?
Yes, so that is a topic that frequently comes up. And so that's addressed in the environmental assessment about public health. But just briefly, you know, cellphone towers do generate radio waves. But they have been found to not be, like, there's a restricted area, like with any antenna. Whether it's a TV antenna or a radio antenna or what have you. There's usually like a restricted area where the power of the signal is such that you don't want to be standing right there for extended period of time. But that's way up on the pole where the antennas are. And so there's not any access to those areas where the power is high. And, you know, there's been a lot of scientific research done on this topic over the years. And we've had radio waves in our community for, since radio waves were invented with, you know, the early nineteen hundreds. And there has been no negative health effects identified due to exposure of cell phones, cellphone towers, antennas, or five G devices as those have continued to be studied.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yep, what's up?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to allow that additional presentation. I think Neil was talking about at the last meeting and I'd like to hear what he has to say. So I'd make a motion to accept that.
Do we have a second? The motion to allow an additional presentation in accordance with the discussion we had at the last neighborhood board meeting. So for those in the meeting space and online, there was a business person in the community that's been requesting several times to give a presentation to, for the, we're an advisory board. So he was looking for some sort of consultation from the neighborhood board regarding a potential business that he's looking to do. Last meeting, he distributed an environmental impact statement. We had one of our cornerstone. Susan, how would you like to be referred to an environmentalist? I'm an educationalist. My passion is education, yours is environment.
Okay, yeah, so I read through the entire EIS. And I really didn't find anything objectionable. I didn't also realize how much of our fish we import from other countries. So I really do think having fish off of Eva as a farm gives us a little more sustainability as far as fish go for our community. And it will be mostly sold on Oahu, according to the EIS. So yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Before we get to that, I wanted to, we had a motion, we had a second. So I'd like to take a voice vote on whether everyone agrees or not to add the presentation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Second?
My clarification because again, why wasn't it put on the agenda?
We had, Senator, we had a
So I know they passed out the EIS and the same thing I told you guys again. There is other community members is very concerned about this. And I thank you to seeing that we're going to get a lot of fish. Did you tell you the percentage that actually going to stay in Hawaii? Like how they doing corner? A lot of the fish that they affiliate in corner doesn't stay in Hawaii. It's shipped out in corner. Not saying this only going to be the same. But just letting you know. So that's the reason why I think they should have been properly put on the agenda. So people in the community that had concerns about the Maui farm and the Maui farms was getting vandalized. Yeah? So they can properly come to the meeting, Chair.
Let me answer the question. So we had several requests to be on the agenda. And as you know, if we have four or five presentations, the meeting will last, won't it be in too long? We'll go past ten o'clock. So this has been a topic of discussion at the past two, maybe three meetings. So we agreed to put it on this one, but we had, what I like to do is give other members of the community time because we talked about this one enough. But we had one person, the Westlake Affordable Housing Project did not show tonight. So the gentleman is actually online who wants to get the presentation. So with that.
Chair, point of information, it's my understanding that this gentleman is requesting a resolution that we would consider at a duly agendized meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so just to be clear in response to the Senator. We may hear some information about this project tonight, but for decision-making purposes, that resolution will be on the agenda and the community will see that and have the opportunity to come and testify when it really matters, when we're making the decision about whether or not to support the resolution.
That satisfy you, Senator? That we can't hear you.
So the person that giving a presentation tonight is also going to be here so that the community can ask them questions? Because right now you can go over the presentation. They only going to come back for the resolution, right?
Right, the presentation we've had more than twice. It's been presented and presented again, so.
I just like you guys be cautious because I just felt like I called the last time when it wasn't. I guess, but you guys do what you guys going to do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. So with that, Neil, are you online? Neil, if you are talking, I believe you are muted. And Trey, thank you for that clarification. Neil? Euler?
Can you hear me now, Chair?
Okay, we can hear you. We can barely hear you though. Can you?
Okay. I'll speak loudly if I can.
Okay.
Apologies that I had not previously got this draft resolution to you earlier. You're indeed correct. I've given, I think now this is the fourth time that I've presented to the board. And so this was not going to be a presentation per se. It was just a request from the last meeting, a carryover from the last meeting that you would consider the actual language of the resolution. I think if the Senator's concern is that there would be a desire for more community input because this wasn't on the agenda, I appreciate that. So if you want me to show up there and actually recirculate the language for this resolution before the next board meeting, then let's do that. I would want to make sure that there's maximum opportunity for public input here. There will also be, when this becomes a draft DA, this is still not yet actually a formally submitted draft DA, there will be abundant opportunity through the other state and federal permit requirements. There'll be abundant opportunity for further input. But this is just an initial expression of support, we hoped, from the community for this project. If the Senator is implying that there's not been enough notice for the community to be aware of that, I'm happy to come back over there in person next month.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your patience and I think that's a win-win. Okay?
Chair, Chair, if I may, I just want to ensure that the gentleman understands that what we need in order for the resolution to be on the agenda is for the Chair to receive it well in advance. Chair, I'm not sure what your usual deadline is, but it's definitely, the agenda has to be posted no less than six days before the meeting under the sunshine law. And so the sooner that you can get that language to the Chair, the sooner it can end up on an agenda and out viewable to the public. That will be required in order for us to vote one way or the other on the measure. It has to be on the agenda in advance.
Thank you for that clarification, Trey. Neil, did you gather? And I know this has been a work in process for a few boards now, so appreciate your patience.
And Chair, you do have the draft of the resolution that I had forwarded to you, so please do disseminate that as you see fit so that there can be public comment next month. Look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Neighborhood Assistant Jeffrey says that will be in the Google Drive. So if the community wants to take a gander at as well. And with that, we'll move on. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, Board Member McGals has a question, Neil.
Yeah, thanks, Neil. I guess I just want to highlight that, you know, you know, and I don't mean this like in an insulting way, but like, you know, there's a process for this stuff, right? And so we have to adhere to that. And it's not, it's nothing about Ocean Era or Neil or anything like that. But you know, you can't take it for granted. You got to come in here and you got to systematically attack that. And I'm sure you're familiar with that with a lot of your other steps. And I, I kind of get a little bit of the feeling that the one here at the, at the board meetings has kind of been taken for granted. And I think it's just a more formal approach. And so, you know, I think that that's been made clear by the comments here. And I just was going to say too, I think when, there were comments made when you were here last month about having some specifics about how the operation actually works. And so if you're going to come and there's a resolution, none of us have seen it yet. So it'll be interesting. My concern for you is that it's going to be a resolution. There's going to be all these questions and it's going to go through another process, right? So if there's a way to share more information, I remember Chair Clark asking specifically, it was like, can you provide details on how an operation might actually work that the community can see and then actually physically start to think about how it would work? That would be really beneficial to garnering that support. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Board Member McGals. Thank you, Neil.
If I may have some clarification, please, Chair, would that be something like the previous presentations? Alex, or would you want to see the entire draft DA as it stands? It is a draft of a draft, as it were.
Alex, yeah. I'll take this answer, Neil. So remember that after the meeting, we kind of talked because I had specific questions about, for example, what type of boats, fishing boats, where would you be operating from, from land? Where would be your operating area? And I got the impression that those weren't completely fleshed out yet. And if I'm asking those questions, I believe that the community would be asking those questions as well. Because it's not just about the fish farm. It's about traversing to and fro from the land. And we had talked about Kalalua. You know, maybe just some more fleshed out specifics on your whole operation. And I want to be clear here, but it's specifically because you're asking for basically a I won't say a recommendation, but similar to a recommendation from the board. So, you know, we have a responsibility to the community to, I think, ask some pretty probing questions in that regard.
Certainly, fine. We can do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Neil.
Alright, I go.
Okay. Mike Palmer, you had a comment or a question, sir?
Very quickly, Neil, I'm having a hard time locating a link for the draft DA. I'm wondering if you could just post it in the chat, please.
Sure, shall do that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Neil. Moving on to item number five on the agenda, residents and community concerns and community announcements. Limited to one turn, two minutes per person. Comments or concerns to public safety and government officials should be addressed in those sections. Any comments from any members in the physical meeting room? Seeing none? Moving on to comments of personnel in the virtual space. Kevin Lai, I believe you are a guest from Neighborhood Board thirteen. Is that correct?
Chair, that is correct. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak briefly. I did want to let you and your fellow board members and members attending the meeting know that I've sent messages to each of you tonight where I'm requesting support for bringing to light some of the errors that are underway in the current Neighborhood Board election cycle. I believe that your district is a contested election. And with that, I think that you'll note that the order of the names of the candidates in the voter information materials and within the online ballot are incorrect as per the statutes and regulations within our neighborhood plan. And this is of concern because it's not the only issue that's at play during this election, but it is enough that I think that we, whether we are incumbent candidates or just residents of a district, want to know that the election process is being held in the way that we expect it to be held. And that errors and oversight are not, as the Neighborhood Commission Office has now proposed, just to be swept under the rug and wait for anyone who wants to complain about it after the fact, attempt to file some sort of an appeal to the election. This is not the way our elections process should run. So I've sent to each of you an email message that includes within it a template letter that you can then send to Neighborhood Commission Chair Oshiro to the testimony registrar for the next Neighborhood Commission meeting coming up on nineteen May. And to Mike Formby, who's the managing director of the city, and Andy Sugg, who is the mayor's chief of staff, as they have a direct role in oversight of the Neighborhood Commission Office. There are lots of things going on. I encourage each of you to read the letter in detail. It defines clearly how you can request information and make others know that we don't want to tolerate these errors. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak to your board. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, I appreciate you letting us know that you sent emails. But this meeting is not necessarily just about board members. It's also about the community. And this is under the section of residents and community concerns. So can you elaborate just quickly, please, within thirty seconds or so, what the major issue is?
Thank you, Chair. The letter also was sent to testimony for this meeting, so will be available for public review. But in brief, the Neighborhood Plan two seventeen three oh one B mandates that the ballots present the names of candidates with last name, comma, first name in that order. In this case, the names have been ordered as first name in alphabetical order by first name. Now that confers to someone a first on the list advantage, which is a known fact as far as elections go. But the fact that the elections ballots were not prepared correctly and that the Neighborhood Board candidate profiles allowed a member who is choosing not to use a surname to hide that completely from all people in his or her district, so that we're not able to identify who they are, background check, criminal check, if their businesses are associated with other issues. This is all being covered up. And it is an issue that the mayor needs to know about, and we need to request that the election process be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Questions on the board? No? Okay. Well.
Just a clarification.
I don't want to go too far down.
The only reason why is that. I had nothing to do with him.
I don't want to go too far down the strip hole because
No, no, I'm not going to talk about that.
Okay.
Chair. I didn't have time to walk over here when you go to this gentleman. It's not even on his subject. All I wanted to do is ask the board members going forward and the commission, I'll write a letter to the mayor to let him know that because our board and our community is growing, that we need to separate as a two-board instead of a one-board. That was all. That was all.
Alright, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of commenting on residents and concerns. So I understand
That is a community concern because
Senator, Senator, I understand that.
Not represented.
Senator, you are not recognized, okay, at this point, okay? I'm not saying your point's not valid, but okay. If I recognize you, Senator, then you can have that appointed to to him it does. In residents and community concerns, Senator, people can get up and say whatever they want. I've allowed that the entire time I've been Chair, okay? Yeah, when you recognize, but you said it in response to him and then you said it has nothing to do with him. I understand that, Senator. The point is, you got up and you talked like it was a response to him, but you weren't recognized. That's the only point. It's a point of order. That's all. That's all. Okay. Any other residents and community concerns? John Rocket? Your hand is up, sir.
Yeah, I was in a different screen, sorry. So hi, and happy her note. May is Bike Month. And so it's a big deal, the mayor made a proclamation that May, can you hear me? You can hear me, right? Okay, May, the mayor made a proclamation that May is Bike Month. And so through that, through the month of May, there's a bunch of things going on. You can go to hbl.org to find out all the different activities that are going on. Mostly it's like a Bike to Work Week and there's different little things. Well, May, there's the film on May ninth, there's twelve, May twelfth, May eighteenth is National Bike to Work Week. So most of these things are happening in town. So if you're not in town, we're at a beach. So unfortunately, hopefully someday we can get some of these things out here. But the thing I'm going to talk about is just that there's a couple workshops that Hawaii Bike Community League is putting on. And five eighteen on Sunday in Kalihi, of course, that's in town from three to Um, and five eighteen on Sunday and Kaliihi, of course, that's in town from three to five P M. There's an e-bike one oh one. Uh, workshop. So it's, uh, the HBL supplies the helmets, the e-bikes, everything. And, and they teach people about. You know, how an e-bike works. Uh, and there's, and they, and they have like ten or fifteen different e-bikes and they're all different shapes and styles. But they're officially the, uh, what Honolulu and what the state of Hawaii, uh, defines as an e-bike. So that's going on on, um, um. Five eighteen and then five twenty-one, there's a fixa flat in Moiliili. And, um, you can again, hbl.org, you can go to their website. And under education or under events and find out all these things are happening. But the mayor made this, uh, the mayor's bike, uh, for you. So look that up. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments from members of the community online? Seeing none? Okay, I just have a quick comment, uh, and it's regarding the holiday at the end of the month. Uh, it is Memorial Day. Sometimes people confuse Memorial Day with Veterans Day. So I would like to take the opportunity now to explain the difference between the two. Memorial Day is used to memorialize or to bring into remembrance those who have passed on. Uh, whether it be through the war. And I know here locally in Hawaii, we also do that for loved ones that have gone on. Veterans Day is a way to recognize those that have served in our armed forces at any given time throughout their lives. Especially those who are alive. So that's the major difference. Thank you. Moving on.
I, I have one, oh, over here.
Who's that?
To your right.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, sir.
You're alright. Uh, this is more of a, a safety thing. So about a week ago, we had, um. A kid get hit in the head with a baseball bat by these other kids. And then they fled on their e-bikes. That, um. Then a month ago, we had that whole street takeover with like a hundred of them. And then they were damaging cars. And I drive around, I see sometimes, especially later at night, ten o'clock at night. They're driving around, they got. I don't know what they're carrying. I don't want to say it's weapons, but they're carrying something, um, sometimes. Um. So it's one thing to say that you're driving around doing wheelies, causing mayhem. Which shouldn't be doing for sure, but then to go and drive around with, with weapons and baseball bats and hit people. Um, it's scary. It's, um, it's, i- it needs. Real serious attention. So I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, whatever the police are doing for cracking down on, on the e-bikes, that's great. They need to go ten X on people who are driving around with a weapon. I mean, it's almost gang affiliation, gang activity at that point. And, uh, it's dangerous, it's scary. Not only are they maybe going to hit somebody and hurt someone like this kid in critical condition, horrible. Um, it could just cause property damage, uh, hit, hit cars and, and damage everything. So. Be, be safe out there. Just watch out. Um, it's more than just they're, they're a distraction on the road that they might physically injure someone. So just. Be careful.
Thank you, sir. Yep, what's up Senator?
Just a couple of things. I apologize if you misunderstand me coming up here earlier. The reason why is because. It's been a, I told board member Mitchell when he was Chair. That it wasn't so much now, but the growth that is happening right now in Ho'opili and Hawaiian homes. They're not. They, they didn't know none of you guys. They called me up, they said, hey, we part of Ever Beach. We, we didn't know Ever Beach was our neighborhood board. So I said, yeah, they said, I don't know none of these guys. So I was talking to them about the guy, you know, a lot of the board members that is, you know, not old, but long time. Board members, uh, to look into the history of the board members.
Cause you are too.
Yeah, yeah. So a long time board members. So that's all the clarification I could give to them, but they were saying, as they're growing. And they are growing. Why, why is the commission, and this is the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I want to write a resolution, but we'd have you guys support it. To change the districting in a sense of they having their own neighborhood board, probably from Renton Road when the district changed with senators and representatives. Going more towards Hawaiian homes and Ho'opili as it grows out because. Right now, there's not too much people knowing what you guys doing here. They thought it was part of, uh, Kapolei. They didn't realize it was part of Ever Beach.
Right.
And that was, that was what I wanted to share. But just one follow up. I just wanted to let you know. The, the gentlemen's or young kids that came there, um, they was being attacked by people from Waipahu. The people that came over there and the person that got hit or assaulted with, I'm sorry, for his injuries and being in hospital. But there was the perpetrators that came with the machetes. Okay, so what had happened was the Ever Beach, we're a small knit community, this Billy K was going on. They phone calls, phone calls, and they went and they came out with more people to attack the people with the machetes. And sad to say, somebody got hurt and went to the hospital, but they was not the aggressor. It was defending their friends and they put out a machete and somebody else put out a bat. And that's all it was. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Senator. Okay, Board Member McGals.
You Chair. I, um, so Senator, you know, and. This is kind of a, a, it's an associated comment, but I know we've spoken about it here at previous boards. So. You know, for us, we talk about Ever Beach and Eva. And they're very different things. Um, and you know, I, I know someone that moved into like North Park and up kind of by John. Uh, up towards Westlock and I live in Ever Beach and for me, that's not Ever Beach. And so. I, along those lines, like we're growing so much and we're talking about, I, I have no idea what this process would look like or anything, but like. If we're going to tackle that, like is, and I don't know about city redistricting and names and all that, but I almost would think. In, in that same thought processes, like that's a whole different city almost for me, you know?
So, um, just two on that. So I know the rumors are going around that Ho'opili. Wants to change the districting and have their own zip code. And on districting because of, like you said, they're growing. But the reason why I bring this up is because a long time ago, when I was on the board, we had, uh. Open seats and then we had seats that was directed to the community. We could never feel ever see. So that's the reason why as board chair, I'd ask the mayor and the commission to go back to open. But right now, again, now we're being lacked of Renton Road, um, towards Ho'opili. Not being representative here. So that's, that's only my suggestion, but you're right. Exactly. Cause a lot of them don't think. Westlock, um, Honolulu, Ululi and Ho'opili as Ever Beach. But they're looking into changing. What I'm hearing, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they're going to be successful, but having their own zip code and district.
Well, you know, uh, and I don't want to spend a whole lot more time on this, but it's, it's probably a good idea. I mean, you're elected official here, maybe one of your, in, in your town halls, you know, and, and the other elected officials. Maybe we share this point with, with the electorate and let them know. Um, because sometimes there is, to your point earlier about not getting representation from ever or people from ever. Um, there's a certain amount of apathy in the community, right? It's like, you know, people like they don't care until something happens in the area and then it's like, they care.
Yeah.
So maybe, uh, educating the community and then.
While others, I'll reach out to Augie and Andrea and maybe we make a talk meeting right there.
Perfect.
Okay, God bless. Thank you.
Thanks Senator. Okay, moving on. We got to move on in the interest of time. John, you have one time. Sorry, sir. Moving on to other monthly reports, limited to three minutes per report. Follow up questions and answers and comments limited to one turn, one minute per person, beginning with Hunt, community's update. No Tony online. Gentry Homes update. I received a note saying that they would not be presenting tonight. Paseco Homes update? Nope. I'm surprised. Uh, D R Horton, Ho'opili update? Seeing none? Moving on to government officials, U S Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Duty Officer, Ura.
Simplify. Um. Good evening Chair, board members, community and everyone else online. There's not a whole lot as far as updates today. So we're still doing the implementation plan for the suppressors and I'm still waiting for documents about the sound barrier project. Um, other than that, July thirteenth, we're doing the canoe regatta at K Bay. Uh, the air station over there. And then just again, a reminder, August eighth through the tenth is the air show. And any questions? That's all I have.
Uh, yeah, you left out a critical part. It's not the Thunderbirds air show, that's Air Force. Which air show is this, sir?
Uh, this is the Blue Angels are going to be headlining. So that's, uh, the United States Navy.
United States Navy, okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of the board? Board Member McGals?
Thanks for that. I know you said you're, you're waiting on documentation and things like that. With the suppressor stuff, is there a timeline for when that's going to get implemented?
Uh, we don't have a timeline that we're tied to. Uh, there's still, uh, we're still waiting for some parts that got delayed. And then we have a maintenance and implementation plan that we have to develop based on that.
And there's no, do you know typically, like how long does that, any ideas like?
I can't answer with confidence, no.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the board in the physical space? Seeing none? Mr. Paulman, I believe you're up next, sir.
Thank you Chair. Uh, just one question. Very much looking forward to the air show again. Um, I'm wondering if you guys, uh, did any lessons learned on the traffic? From the previous, uh, Blue Angels air show at Kanioli. It was, uh. It was significant and I'm just wondering if, uh, there's any changes that remain or should we just pack a few meals? Uh, and plan to spend about six hours in our car again.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Um, it's been three years since the last one. So for this, for this year's, a, a large portion of the planning. Is for traffic and parking. So we have multiple, uh, control points as, as well as like direction. Uh, we're hoping to get, uh, an improved parking layout and plan, uh, implemented as well. That will help with the flow of traffic. Parking and then, um, the gate access is obviously going to be one of the, the main barriers as far as flow. Um, but it is a vital, uh, part of the, the new, uh, planning process. So I can't promise it's going to be, you know, fast, but, uh, hopefully it will be improved.
Can you ask me something about the, um, last two shows, it's been really hot out there. So can you just like, you know, maybe cool it off a little bit? So. Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of the community? Seeing that? Thank you kindly. Appreciate you. One, two, three, United States Navy. Sorry, I missed, I missed a core intro there. Next time.
Oh, yeah.
Alright Chief, what you got?
Alright, good evening Chair, members of the board, Senator and members of the community. I see, I saw some new faces online, so I'll introduce myself again. I am Chief Jose Hain and I'm the Media Operations S E A, Senior Inlicit Advisor in Arachnems. Over at Navy Region Hawaii and it's a pleasure to meet you virtually at least. So hello. Uh, quick updates that I have, a community whiteboard tour, we're planning one for July. So if you have a group that's interested. And attending, please send me a message and we'll be happy to get you on that tour. Hopefully we can make it happen. Uh, exciting update for La Lima twenty twenty-five. We're at a hundred and fifty active community service. So getting close to that two fifty. I'm confident that will meet and exceed that goal. Again, that's just highlighting what the Navy. Has already been doing in the community for years. We just, uh, tied it in with the two hundred and fiftieth birthday this October. So that'll be exciting. And. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board in the physical space? Seeing none online? Seeing none, members of the community? Seeing none. Thank you Chief.
Thank you so much. Oh, yeah.
Appreciate you. Moving on to United States Army Duty Officer. Whoa? Whoa? Bueller? No? Okay, moving on. U S Representative Ed Case Quarterly Report. Seeing no representative person nor the rep. Moving on to Mayor Langiardis Representative. I believe we have a rep online?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Good evening Chair. Uh, Mark in a minute, uh, representing, um, Mayor. Uh, two items from last meeting to follow up on. Uh, first one is regarding the traffic light at the intersection of Geiger and Kamakana.
Yes.
Uh, the response from Department of Transportation Services is that, uh, Gentry Homes will be programming. The design and installation of the, that traffic signal. And so they, it's in the process, uh. As far as the exact, uh, status, I, I don't have that, but it is a, a Gentry, uh, project though. And then the next item is regarding the Oniula Beach Park, uh, coverage station. The status of that is that the project is in the planning, early design phase and consultation. With the various, uh, permitting agencies, uh, is ongoing. And, uh, at some point they will have a presentation to, uh, the Neighborhood Board. Whether it's parks or, or I'm sorry, or, uh, Department of Design and Construction. That's all I have.
Okay, questions from members of the board? Seeing none in the physical space online? Okay, I have a question. It's a follow up question actually. And I, I want to reference. Say nine, ten years ago, when the Department of Education was pointing fingers at the ledge. And the ledge was pointing fingers at the Department of Education when it came to us asking questions about air conditioning. So at last month's meeting. Uh, Board Member Tananis and I believe another board member and myself, we, each one of us asked about this, this traffic light and we reminded. The mayor's rep about. The fact that, uh, people have died because of that intersection. So this is, this is stretching on now. And I do want to read. This note that I received from Sunny Rosario. Uh, Gentry Homes Affairs and Community Relations. Aloha Chair, I won't be able to attend tonight's meeting. No major updates from Gentry. Status on Geiger light is that our engineers are currently working to resolve comments received. From the Department of Transportation Services. So I asked her for clarification. So what I'm getting here is they're working to resolve comments from you and you're waiting on them. So can you provide clarification on what those comments are? Cause we, we'd like to be brought into the conversation because we've been waiting and asking and waiting and asking. So I don't want to get stuck into this do loop like we did with air conditioning and have the students suffer or worse, have someone else get killed.
Understood. Uh, so it's just a process of, you know, the design, their design consultant. Uh, submitting, you know, their set of plans to the city, whether it's, and then, you know, like it goes through the process where D P P. As well as D T S, uh, is reviewing, you know, their design. They mark it up. Uh, resubmit it back to Gentry's, uh, consultant. Who, you know, to change, make those changes and then they go back and resubmit again. So. Exactly, you know, where there are, I, I can find out, uh, the exact details, how many, you know, rounds they went. Are they closer to getting approvals? But right now, you know, I don't have that information.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to reiterate what we all talked about on the board last time is, you know, people have died. So this is not a. It's not a D P P or a, a procedure or policy. And one thing that's always disturbing when you talk to some businesses and you're not happy and they say, well, that's our policy. Well, I understand this is the process that we have to go through this negotiation between Gentry and the city and Gentry and the city. But again, that, that remains a dangerous intersection there to the point that people have died. So maybe can you guys like stamp something, you know, people have died on the document or something? Just, I'm not trying to be facetious, but my point here is it, it remains a very deadly area. So if we could somehow hurry this process up, I'm, I'm not sure how, because I'm not part of that process. But when I get an, an email saying that they're resolved. Get it, it's a process, but, but we've been waiting and asking and waiting and asking and waiting and asking. I don't know, how long has it been? What, a year now? Yeah, it's been over a year. So, uh, you know, to me, that's beyond the pale.
Okay, I'll, I'll get, uh, more detailed, uh, information from, uh, D T S as far as where they're, where they're at in that process.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to com. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry Senator. I was a little, I got a little caught up there. Members of the community.
Don't worry, it's a very topic that we need to solve. And, um. Again, um, not, not you because you're the messenger, but, um, you know, we talked to Debbie Looney, Gentry for years, for years. Um, even prior to the person getting killed over at the intersection when they was planning to do their light industrial park. Over there across Honolulu, trimming plant. So this is not anytime new, maybe for you, but for Gentry. They're kicking a can down the road and the only way this thing is going to get done is the mayor. And you guys get behind this and push them just like what, uh, Board Member, uh, Chair Clark said. Somebody died there. We could have prevented the death if they did the study prior to be asking. Again, he wasn't there. So what we need from you guys is demand Gentry to come here and D T S and everybody that has a part in this. And explain to the community why their lives are not important. That's what we want to know. Next one going to you. You guys talking about Oniula Beach Park. Did somebody forget the key to cut the grass? Understand it's under construction and you guys are protecting the trees, but the grass is three feet tall. So again, thank you for the improvements. Thinking about trying to do things for our community. But again, look at our parks. Giving us a bathroom and every single park in our community. Right now, Pulo District Park. Right now, Pula District Park, the one over there by Kiwaniula. See if you want to have your kids play in there and go home with dust all in their nose and lungs. Our parks are falling apart, and I told the mayor, if Laura Thielen cannot do her job to resign, she already get her top three. She can resign already. Because now she get her money, she can reason, he can retire instead of having sixty-two thousand for retiring. Now she can get about a couple hundred thousand so she can retire. Tell her to leave because she's killing our parks in our community. So I want the grass cut, and I want to know when you guys are going to do it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Any other comments from members of the community, online or in the physical meeting space? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Moving on to Councilmember District One, Councilmember Andrea Topola.
Aloha. Good evening, Chair and distinguished board. My name is Jeannie from Councilmember Andrew Tupola's office. I have nothing to report today. If you guys have any questions or concerns, feel free to go ahead and provide me information.
Any questions or comments? Board Member Gaus?
Yeah, thank you. I wonder if you could take back to the council member. I copied her on some some emails specifically about One Ula Beach Park and that situation that that Mr. Yanominia just addressed. I think he's probably from, so to say, a little bit of a higher level. Maybe he's not, you know, in the weeds on some of those details, but I see CJ Tupola's office on some of my correspondence with Ted Hayden, and I was going to talk about a little bit about that in the in the Parks Committee Report. But we could use some, some I think there's a plan to hold a meeting to discuss, you know, how to move forward there. And so just, I want to keep that on her radar and and to be sure that she chimes in when the when the opportunity is going to come up pretty soon here, and just want to make sure it's on her radar and that she is actively chiming in on that. I would really appreciate it.
Sure. Can I get that part again, the address, the name?
One Ula Beach Park.
Only, oh, yeah, okay. One Ula, thank you.
I wish. Board Member Trey, you're up.
Thank you. There was a op-ed from the council chair concerning the sewer fee increase in Civil Beat. I think it was today or yesterday. That's Bill sixty. Councilmember previously came to us and spoke about the sewer fee increase and was concerned about the increases. I was just curious if you were able to say whether or not the council member supports that alternative plan that the council chair is proposing? And if you're not prepared to speak about that tonight, to please let the council member know that that we'd like to know. Thank you.
Not a problem. Yes, unfortunately, I'm not able to speak of it tonight, but I will be able to have something presented by next meeting.
Okay. CNN, other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mahalo. Have a good evening.
Aloha. Moving on to Councilmember District Nine, Councilmember Augie.
Oh. Aloha, Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Everybody online.
Augie, hold on. Augie, I'm sorry. Councilmember, both rep, I'm going to go back. Come on up to the mic, ma'am.
About sewers?
That's okay.
Oh, okay. Yes. You know, I live in a condominium, and I have a box of glass. And I know that you're working on a new I want to say dump refuge center. And I can't stand the idea of putting all this glass, box of glass in the in the dump, I mean, in the refuge at my condominium, because we don't have any place on condominiums, all in a state, I think, that will take the glass like, like single homes do. So I would like to have you look at that and somehow get the condominiums, all the condominiums, and maybe the markets too, that don't have any place to put their glass to work that out so that we don't have to put all that glass in our land in our new landfill.
And I believe this comment was for Jeannie Tupola's rep.
Thank you.
Jeannie, you still online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I believe this comment was for you. I'm sure she's talking about having dedicated recycling for glass?
Dedicated recycling.
Condominium specifically. Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and take this back to our team.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Members of the community, Senator?
Oh, Angela, tell her thank you for that town hall meeting shared in Ona Ulihuli Ever Beach. My concern is still yet again our parks, but mainly because she, when I talked to Augie, majority of One Ula Bush belongs to her. So they did fence around the area that they're digging and looked like they get signs saying we're protecting the tree, but nobody is still protecting the park. The park is being overgrown by grass, and nothing is being done for that. That is one. And again, can you go look again at our parks? We mainly, I'm not sure if Pula District Park by Kiwaniula is you guys on? If not, I'm going to ask about Augie about that. My concern is, again, when it comes to the light, I really would want Councilwoman Angela to really look into this light in front of Geiger, if that is your area. If not, can you team up with Councilman Augie, because I'm going to be asking him the same question, to expedite this, because the mayor can talk to DPP and get them out of their rut, because it's turning around. Long time with DPP, one or two years. It's too long. So can you guys work together? And then I'm going to make a, write a letter to you guys and Gentry, Debbie Looney them, to expedite this traffic light, because it's not a want, it's a need, and it was need before the person had passed away and got run over and killed. Thank you.
What do you?
Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you, Senator. CNN, other comments? Mahalo, Jeannie. Your, your, excuse now. Thank you, Senator. Okay, Augie, you're definitely up now.
Aloha, Chair, Neighborhood Board, everyone watching online. Okay, so DOT confirmed that they are planning to add Rumble Strips along Exit Six in Eva by the end of the month, to try to slow drivers down. So thank you to DOT, DTS, and HPD for requesting that. The City Council is still in budget season. We have a special budget meeting on Monday, May twelfth, so if anyone would like to testify on any of the city budgets for the second round of amendments, please do so. I did request to add a pump track in our district so that we can give bike riders an option for them to pursue recreational biking. In the mayor's state of the city address, he announced the that the crisis outreach response and engagement or CORE program is coming to our side of the island. They are looking for a spot to run out of, and currently looking at a room at the Westlock Modules. This is exciting for our community, because CORE is a team that can respond to the crisis calls that are nonviolent, especially regarding our unsheltered population. So it's not a shelter, but you can call on them to see if they can, you know, help out the homeless individual in the areas that shouldn't or be conducting themselves in ways that they shouldn't. Office introduced Resolution twenty-five-one thirty-two, which renames Pula Neighborhood Baseball Field to Peter Walken Jr. Baseball Field in honor of the late Peter Walken Jr., who maintained the baseball field for many years. I want to thank Senator Favela for emailing us and bringing that to attention. We will also be recognizing student athletes on Wednesday at the City Council from Campbell High School. Finally, congrats to the class of twenty twenty-five, and if everyone would like to join me in June, we will be doing another cleanup in our area. With that, I will take questions, and while spending time with my son, who is home from Oregon, I did hear some of the concerns and have taken note.
Thank you, Councilmember. Comments, questions from members of the board in the physical space? Board Member Gaus?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmember. Other questions? So just to confirm what Senator Favela was talking about, Pula District Park, is that, that's Tupola's side of the road?
That's mine. That's mine.
Okay, so I was just curious. So on, so background on that, you know, we went through this process last year, John Rogers and I, and you were at those meetings as well, where there was the main brain of that watering system that stopped functioning. And I'll be honest, I haven't been up there, so I'm really glad, because you can't really see it from Fort Weaver, and so I haven't seen the top of it recently. I know the trees are, so it's good. So if it's really dry, we should find out what it is, because that whole process, they were waiting for that main brain, and they finally got it. So I just wanted to comment that and refresh your memory on that. On the second thing is, so I had a question, you know, I know I'm understanding that you're on this new PRTF working group about the lead. Is that correct? Are you a part of that working group with Rep. Reyes Oda?
No. Or maybe, I, you know, I think Aaron in my office is attending those meetings, so.
My understanding is that DOH actually asked for you to be on that, but maybe Rep. Reyes Oda can clarify when she comes. And I guess my question is like, I actually mailed you about the lead issue at PRTF a couple of times more than a year ago, and you've never like responded to me on it. So I'm just curious. I understand it's a sensitive topic, but I would like to hear response, like, I've written to you very openly, not trying to take like a real strong point, but like, we need to explore this. And I would, I would like to see a response back saying, hey, yeah, we do, let's look into it, that kind of thing. And what I've had from now is just complete silence, so no response on your behalf or Aaron or anything like that. So I ask you courteously, it's like, can you pay attention to that? This, this is part of your neighborhood, and I think your representation and at least being involved is really important. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for members of the board? CNN in the physical space, any online? CNN, members of the community? Please step up to the mic and smile. Thank you, Senator.
Oh, yeah, I know you took notes, but I just wanted to reiterate, you know, this, this Pula District Park ever happened last year, whatever. We've been working on there twice already. They had to redo the irrigation. I think the irrigation over there is an R-one system. And listening to the plumbers and people that work at the park, that is a poor design. I understand we want to save water, but those sprinklers cannot handle this R-one, and it's keep breaking down. And I thank Gentry and whoever came to start painting the fence over there that have been getting vandalized. But what I need you to irrigate, irrigate to Laura Thielen, Park Director, regardless if that's her part or not, her fence, the graffiti and the color green on the wall is a city and county green. So again, she need to take a little, what she need to do is take a drive over with you, Augie, and see if she wants to run in dirt. Right now, there is no way you guys are going to be able to get that up. It's dead. It's dirt. That's it. So the only way you guys can be able to do that now is catch up. Because you guys are going to have to restrict usage to fix that part. And the community ain't going to be happy with that. So I'm just saying, right now, I'm getting calls after calls. I drive there every once in a while because of the graffiti. But I went take pictures last month, last year, same condition, made a bit worse to Laura Thielen, who's the Park Director, and in the next letter, I said she need to resign. So I need support from City Council to tell the mayor she has to go. She has no concern or no consideration for our parks in the area, especially our families. You know how bad it is when I have another community member from my family comes from another district and telling us how dangerous our park is, like I never know. So I sent them the pictures and the letter to them, and I really need your help on this one, because I'm going to be writing another letter to ask her for resignation to step down. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator. CNN, other questions? Thank you. Oh, wait, I have a hand up. My name is
Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, Trey.
I believe the council member heard my question to Councilmember Tupola's representative about Bill sixty and council chairs' plan to avoid the one hundred and fifteen percent sewer rate increase over the next ten years. Councilmember, have you formed a position on the bill and the alternative plan yet? And if so, could you share your thinking with us?
No, absolutely. We are with the staff, really trying to dissect it, only because we understand the challenges. We understand that, you know, this the stuff that we're doing is playing catch up, and we're trying to find alternatives. We have, we've had long discussions on how we can attack the problem, and so we're still, I'm still I'm still thinking about how am I going to vote on that? So as soon as I get, I can get back to you as soon as I get more detailed and more clarity on just how, you know, this will affect the community.
This is not a new issue, Councilmember. Just want to, I just want to make
I know, we wait, we wait.
If you're still debating this, that's, that's, that's a problem. I mean, I, you're not one of the ones I expect a political answer from. I just want to, I want to put that out there. This is not a new issue. So if you're saying I want to take some time to look at this, I want to know what you've been doing in the meantime.
No, no, I, you know, I, I don't want to see any higher fees and was trying to find ways to either go and talk to the administration. I kind of, I like it, because it gives us time to, well, it gives us, gives us the community a time to digest it. But I'm still hesitant on a lot of things, though. I will make a firm decision, sir, ASAP.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the community? CNN, thank you, Councilmember. Moving on to Border Water Supply? CNN, moving on to Department of Education? CNN, moving on to Governor Green's representative?
Hello, I do not have a update this evening, but I will leave my email address in the chat if anybody has anything they want to pass along to me as well.
Comments, questions from members of the board in the physical meeting space? Tara? CNN, moving on to members online? CNN, members of the community, Senator? For the governor's rep? No? Okay. Board Member Gaus?
Yeah, thank you, Tara. I was wondering if you take, the governor is a medical doctor. We have this issue of potential lead contamination at PRTF. And I don't, I think he'd be the first one to say that lead is not a good thing to have around children and pregnant women. I'd like to see him be aware of what's happening and the potential implications, and then push to get additional testing, particular air testing downwind of the range, to see if it's, if those particulates have layed that are coming up from the burms when bullets hit the burms and drift downwind. This is a priority for people that live just downrange from the wind, including myself and my neighbors, so please pass that on.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tara. Appreciate your time. Moving on to Hawaii Department of Transportation Quarterly Report? CNN, moving on to Senate District Nineteen, Senator Henry Aquino?
Aloha, Chair, all members, members of the community. My name is Nathanda Isay, representing Senator Aquino this evening. Chair, I do believe I did send the being said, I do stand by my report as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the representative of Aquino's office? CNN, the physical space, CNN online? Any in the physical space? CNN, okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate District Twenty, Senator Kurt Favela?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. Give you guys my funny newsletter. It was very exciting, this session on continuing the build out of our athletic football complex that we are on our way. The permitings are coming in, I think today and tomorrow. They already come on site. They already got the containers there. So within eighteen plus months, we should have almost a whole stadium completed with the spectator side. It's going to be done after the home side with locker rooms, boys and girls locker room, meeting rooms, and other facilities. We had a little, I guess, incident, the pad prior to construction long time ago, when they first went butcher.
When they first went butcher our field. Um and the construction company that was there poured diesel on our grass that is far away from the kids. But it's more by the fence lying by the gym. That's going to cost a lot of money to environmentally clean up. So that's what the Department of Health didn't sign off on the permits. But in, encouraging the Department of Health and the DOE to not to keep prolonging and kicking the can down the road on the stadium. For us to get it done because again, construction costs money. Even though we was blessed to get another nine million dollars for the football stadium. We want to make sure that our community get every single bang for its buck. Um another update that was really great to see, you know, our Campbell High School girls, our first ever flag football and championship. Did a great job. We had the track team, same thing, uh the boys JV basketball. We have a lot of champions coming out of Campbell. It was great. What was really great to see that I didn't get to see when we had uh the AD and some of the people that graduated with me. Uh complained to me about the gym on how the DOE said they lost the money to fix the bleachers in the gym. And um the termites and they couldn't use, half of the gym wasn't being used. So yesterday I was really blessed to see that not only they had completed the project and got it done. By uh meeting with uh some facilities and with uh Senator De La Cruz to secure that money because they told the athletic director. John, you're gonna like this, San John, that they lost the money. Hmm, how you have money to get lost? Well, within a week or two, the money was found, which was great. So we finally got the thing done. You guys need to take a tour in there. You guys gonna be, Mitchell, it actually has the bleachers on both sides like before. Not wooden, not wooden, beautiful orange with our logos all on the bleachers. You guys gonna love it. They're gonna redo the floor. Redo the whole floor. It's gonna be really awesome. So now we have a brand new softball field, new football field and refurbished, not a new gym. But a refurbished gym, um even the facilities in the bathrooms are being done too. So we, we, we need to, to take, board members and community should take pride in the fact that things are getting done for our community. And we're going forward because we have great leadership within our schools that reaches out to the people that's willing to help and just kind of get the work done. So that's, that's pretty much the highlights. If you guys get any questions, I'm willing to answer.
I, I appreciate the awesome news. Um. But I won't believe it until I see it. I'm, I haven't received an invite yet, even though a lot of those improvements started right here at the Ever Neighborhood Board.
Yes, when the girls came and talked about you, the bathroom out there in the field with towels and changing and.
So it'd be nice if Principal John Henry could, you know, extend an invitation, maybe you have invited.
Well, what I'll do, I'll do board members, I'll, I'll reach out to you guys because only reason why I went in the gym is because I was part of the parade that they had for the girls. Right? So I was invited to, to walk with the girls, which was a blessing. And um so I told, you know, we, we all know Jelani Rolark, he's our classmate. He was the one called me up all hysterical that the, the, the school facility said they didn't want the money. So I told him, hey, would it be nice if I brought, uh he would at least call me when the thing was completed, right? So it is a joke back and forth, but definitely I'll, I'll make an invitation to the board and we all go take a walk in our country and see how blessed our community is. But thank you guys, appreciate it.
So one follow up question, are we gonna have Friday Night Lights this?
What's that?
Are we gonna have Friday Night Lights this year?
Uh, we, the, the game.
No.
Sorry, eighteen months, um.
Okay.
We, we, we not gonna have games, but they can be able to practice on the field. Uh for the next eighteen months, they're gonna be doing construction. We wanted to, so what, what happened was they was gonna phase it out, guys, in two construction phases. So the money that uh when I first got in there seven years ago to accumulate it to about thirty, almost thirty something, thirty four, thirty something million increments. Um they looked at it and they, they, they felt that they could finish the spectator side bleachers. And the, the, the home side, only thing that we couldn't put in was because of that contamination. Um is the concession stand and uh the bathrooms over there by the concession stand. That's the only thing that probably not gonna be able to get done in eighteen months. But the reason why I had put the pressure on them because we didn't want to have eighteen months shut down. And then they gotta close it again to do the next phase for the visitor side. So. With a lot of prayers, um we, we're gonna get it done in eighteen months. Only thing we might not be having is the, the concession and the restrooms where the concession stand tent used to be. So everything else is on schedule so far.
Okay. Questions from members of the board? Board member Isaiah.
Uh, just real quickly, um regarding your child abuse press conference that you had with that, that child, that's in a horrible situation.
Yes.
It's like the worst situation you could have. Um. My wife has been a guardian of item for a decade. She stopped doing it in part because we are raising our own children now.
Yes.
Um, she had two main complaints on why these issues in our community arise. One of them, the GALs are not paid enough. Who can get paid sixty an hour as an attorney? It's crazy. So these pay raises go a really long way. All right? So i- in any way that you were involved in that, thank you.
Yep.
Um, the thing though that she tells me is the most difficult is that there's a, a major lack of social workers and caseworkers.
Yes.
So she is inundated with cases for, e- ever since I've met her, she's flooded with the worst cases you can imagine, horrible, sad cases. And she's expected to do all the work of a GAL and a social worker caseworker.
Yes.
It's too much. You can't do it. So um. You know, you're, 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 you're meeting with the mayor. That's great. Well, how, what can we do if that's the question?
Yep.
Get more social workers, more caseworkers. That's what you can do. That's what the GALs will tell you to do.
Yes.
That's what my wife, uh I promised her I would tell you that, so.
Hundred, hundred twenty percent. So just to let you know the backstory, um this didn't, wasn't because I went to the mayor. I was working with the Department of Health and finding out how we can improve. You guys already know, the Department of Health, we know and, and the social workers, we know we shorthanded. But that shouldn't be an excuse because our children is getting caught in a, in a, in a, in a, in a bind that they are either dying, getting hurt or abused constantly. Reason why we went out there to the mayor's is because the parks on the west side have a lot of kids. And one of the kids ingested not just crystal meth, but fentanyl. So it was something that was very alarming. So the community wanted to come out and voice their opinion to the mayor. And the disappointment with the, the director of the Parks and Rec. So again, so we had um, we had uh. Had the social workers go out there and do another sweep. We're not trying to take, this is the thing, let people understand. When we get Ryan Umani, who's, who's the head of uh with the, with the child abuse uh director. The problem, what I'm trying to tell everybody on the beach is that nobody's trying to take your kid. But if your kid, if you are in a high danger zone where that park is, fights, drugs, everything you can think of. Sexual abuse, everything you can think of, very, very negative. Not knowing at the park director and the mayor, not knowing, they needed to know. That's the reason why we went out there. When you call HPD, and this is one time that I was very disappointed, they called HPD to the scene. And you know what? They told the person that witnessed, the father laid on, we found out that was a stepfather. Beating, beating his child, the stepchild, whatever. Yeah, still his child, like a hu, like an adult. So when they called the police, you know what the police said when they came over there? Wow, are you related to them? That's what one hurt me. That's the reason why we went out there to the mayor's office. But I'm working with Ryan Umani, who's the head of um CPS, and we're gonna get things done. And we definitely gonna look into what your wife had just said and continue to move forward and getting the funding. That's the reason why we gave a lot of money to Ryan Umani's department. Into improving this because right now, if you guys don't know out there, we're gonna get sued. Multiple times for child abuse and neglect. The part that I wanted to, I'll, I'll finish over quick, as, as clerk, um board member clerk, chair, sorry. Reason why I wanted you guys to hear this real clearly because it's very serious. I'll tell you why. Because when you adopt a child that you had in foster care, long time. And you know already the workers never check on you for years and decades. Knowing that you're coming to the end, asking if you want to adopt, if you're not, whatever, they're not gonna extend. So you adopt them. And guess what happens when you adopt a child? All overlooking service, services done. That's how the child died in Waialoa. That's how the child died in Wa- Wa- Waialoa because they adopted the child and they never even checked if those people was fit to have those kids. So that's what we need to be aware of and we're working hard with Ryan Umani in get, making sure that we protect our kids and protect your wife and, and so forth. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Moving on to Senate District twenty one, Senator Mike Gabbert. Not seeing anyone in the virtual or physical meeting space. Moving on to Representative Elijah Parrick, District thirty nine. Not seeing anyone in the physical or virtual space. Moving on to District forty, Representative Julie Reyes Oda. Definitely in the meeting space as she usually is. Rep Reyes Oda, you can continue if you like. You don't need to wait for the chair. Yeah, go for it.
So I'm Julie Reyes Oda, District forty, Eva Beach. Good evening, everybody. So I, I want to make sure that I report first. Driving in here at this certain time, there's three lanes closed on the left lane. If anybody's driven here, they are doing um road construction. I think every, every, probably every weeknight. But I want to start by talking about numbers. So the first thing that I want to do is um just mention two CIP that affected this area. So when I report CIP, these are just the things that are funded. That's for everybody. It's not necessarily only directed to me. It's for everybody in this area. So the two site CIPs that I think people would be interested in is the um East Capole TOD, which is Transit Orient Development. They're doing infrastructure, which is plans for their EIS. That was thirty six point four million and the Campbell High School. Was nine million for the continuation of the phased funding for Title Nine project for the design and construction of the athletic stadium and support. Facilities. I think Senator Favella probably mentioned that earlier. Um, the next thing that I wanted to go over was to release the, report the release of the funds since I've been elected. So remember the release of funds are things that came through CIP before. So these are not things that were requested by me. This is just me reporting them. On December thirtieth, we had a million dollars released for Holamua Elementary School multi-story classroom building. To finance design for a new three-story classroom building. On March twelfth, we had two million for Campbell High School Athletic Complex Phase Two. And on April twenty fourth, we had Iroquois Point Elementary School Sewer System and Perimeter Fence Replacement. To replace the, to finance the design and construction for the replacement of their sewer system and six-foot perimeter fencing, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, also going over numbers, if you can see the front of my um newsletter. I wanted to go over and show everybody the numbers because I love talking about numbers. So I wanted everybody to see the legislative session by numbers. You guys will see that in this session, three thousand one hundred and seventy-two bills were passed. In the end, sorry, were introduced. In the end, three hundred and twenty-two were passed. Um, and when you see those, you'll see split up by the House and the Senate, how many passed through there. The acts are the ones that were already signed and then how many were vetoed. It's, we're not in that area yet. Then you'll see the House concurrent resolutions, the House resolutions. What's the difference between those when you see the word concurrent? The House resolutions were ones that went through only the House and you'll see that designated with the name, the number, the letters HR. And if they go through um House concurrent, it would be HCR and that's when it went through the House and then went to the Senate and it passed on both sides. And in reverse for the Senate, if you did see Senate concurrent, it went through the Senate, made it through, crossed over and went to the House. So that, so when you see concurrent, both sides read it and approved it versus just the single name. Um, so probably to report that I have, and this is my first term, but I got one adopted under the House resolution and the House concurrent resolution, which was about PRTF. Um, and then just to continue so that everybody understands the legislative session, we are finished with the session, but the bills are not done yet. So while they may have passed in that box on the bottom, it'll say that the constitution provides the governor forty-five days after adjournment, which was last Friday. To um, to say that he's gonna veto any bill. So he actually has thirty-five days to give intent to veto. That day is June twenty-fourth. That's when he gives the legislature the intent to veto. And then after the forty-fifth day, it is vetoed because I believe that the legislature has ten days to be able to get back in session and to see if they're gonna um override that. So those are the dates that we're looking at. So technically, if anything is sitting there as a bill that you guys are watching, you're really watching for the date of June twenty-fourth to see. If it's gonna get vetoed and then July ninth is when, then really it's over. The session would be over. Um, on the backside, you can take a look at those um session recap that I wrote about. But another thing is public access room. If anybody's interested, there's a contact information for public access room. Really, I promote everybody to try to participate in government. And the public access room is a great place. They answer questions. They're very good at giving directions. They have handouts and everything there. So please contact them. Um, I think. See what else? I wanted just to say a couple of things that, what did I learn this session? I want to say that I learned that when we look at bills and things that have people's name on it, the one thing that I think I did learn was um. We contribute things, even it doesn't necessarily have our name on the front of it. So that's something that I think that I learned. Um, that, you know, when, when things are going through the process, there's a lot of hands in there as it, as it worked its way to the end. So um I, I, it really is a process where sometimes when your name isn't on it, you were contributory too. So that's what I learned there. Um. And that, I know that the reputation of politicians are that they don't work hard, but from my office, um we are working very hard. And I'm excited to be working with you guys. We have done during session, reviewed the thousands of testimonies um and. Made sure that we made decisions based on those. I, I try very hard to make sure that also people understand how to participate in the process. That's something that's important to me, being that I was the other, on the other end of the, the microphone. And um I hope that for everyone here that you guys can participate next session. Um, sign up for any and all of our newsletters, go to our websites or our social media, all the elected people, not just myself. And um ask any questions that you guys have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Any questions from members of the board in the physical space? Board member Gauss?
Yeah, thanks, Rep Reyes Oda. I don't know if you were here when I was uh addressing Rep, Rep Tolba as well. So is he, am I correct that he's on the working group for PRTF?
Yes. So when it went through, I believe it was the Health Committee, they redid. As the committees review them, they can make amendments and there was amendment to my, my bill. Sorry, my resolution. And the reason that there was is because the Department of Health was listed as the, I think the convener and they wrote to say that they didn't want to be the convener.
Okay.
And so when they did that, they moved, they, they moved them in to be part of the committee. But they moved to um the councilman up. So it's the District forty rep and the council District nine. That's the, the co-chairs.
Okay. So I, I don't know, he, I don't think he was aware or that he's on, he's on that working group. So I, I politely, politely. Said that I think he was and, and um, so I don't know how that works, but I am, I'm curious because he's, I'm, I'm wondering obviously about. When the first meeting, if you, and I, I'm seeing your date. That you just provided us with the day and I'm wondering if there is a ballpark idea of when you're thinking to try to convene. Uh, the first or when the first meeting will be convened for the.
Okay. So just to be clear, resolutions, you know, you're not waiting to see if the governor's gonna veto. You're clear.
Okay.
It's good already. Yeah. For the resolution, it's good. It's adopted. Um, the, the Robbie, my office manager is the one that was coordinating it. The hard part that he was having was he said you reported your, your um calendar right away and everyone else did not. And so then it was coming where we couldn't get a time because nobody was giving their calendar. And then he said, when he contacts you, you reply right away. It wasn't the same for everybody else.
Any other questions from members of the board? Okay. Then online, any in the physical meeting space? Okay. Thank you, Rep. Appreciate it. Moving on to Representative District forty-one, Representative David Alcoa the third.
Hello, Chair. Thank you, guys. Um, I don't really have much uh today.
Um, I don't really have much today, but I do want to comment on some of the things that was said. I am Senator said a lot of great things about what happening to Campbell Reyes Oda, Julie Reyes Oda. She is actually really working hard. I can testify about that. She's at the Capitol and really putting in some time and kind of like getting there, staying there the latest out of everybody out there. So, um, trying to build relationships, trying to get things done, um, in every way that she can. So thank you, Julie. I did want to speak about Oloa Park. I did meet with Alitoba Councilman on Tuesday out at the park. I also been out going out for back couple of weeks about talking to the janitor. But what frustrates me about it all is that that I do, um, maybe countless hours working, talking to these guys. And it would take me only fifteen minutes to adjust the timer on the sprinkler and let the sprinkler run a little bit longer, and it would be done. And it and it's sickening to my stomach that that all I even talked to the director from C D N County, and I walked in the office. You know, they didn't want to meet up with me. They didn't want to see me. I just went there to pick up my permit at, um, C D N County. And I just was there to try to show face and meet up with the director. And I sent emails to come out to our Everbeach Parks, you know, and our and what our kids have to face. And it's sad when it's something easy to fix. One sprinkler at the high school sometimes takes so long to get it done. One sprinkler at the community park takes so long to get it done. By then, our grass is dead and our and our kids face this. And I it's so frustrating when I when I don't listen to them and I just get one subcontractor out there and do the job. It's done that fast, that simple, you know? I'm not saying Councilman is not listening. Sometimes he faces challenge as well himself, you know, but it's frustrating that we go through that. I'm glad that the construction is back on on Nord Road. So construction is going, it was on a slow stop for maybe a year or so. So it's kind of going back on a Nord Road. How Bush was stopped for, uh, construction there, they never have the pipes. The pipes just came in, they're starting construction again. Um, they just started a couple of days ago, and they're saying the deadline for that is going to be in November or December. I think they can get it done earlier, but, um, that's that's the city deadline on them. Other than that, um, you guys have any questions?
Any questions from members of the board in the physical space?
I had something else after.
Uh, Board Member Tenness?
Rep Alcoz.
Yes.
Um, these parts that come in, I mean, state, city, and all that kind of stuff. Seems like they get them from like Italy or I don't know where, because it takes months and months for just one part. Right pump, one screw, one bolt for coming. Is there any way to make it so where either we have extras? Because we have multiple parks around in the
Right.
in the in in the state. I mean, it seems like every pump can be different or every part can be different. We all the same paint, so why we can't have all the same parts, you know?
Yeah. Um, a month ago, I took the Cardinals out there and we went paint the whole graffiti on the wall. I we didn't, we put the primer on and the Cardinals was all the ones who was using out there. In fact, I was at the town hall telling you guys that was painting out the graffiti. And, um, I just want to say that in this session right now, since our session is over, I do want to make working groups on the outside because we do once a month meeting here. But if you have something on water and land and the parks or the education, now is time that we bring our brains together and let's bring in new bills that coming up and see what we can do more than just a once a month meeting. So I'll be doing some group, um, working group out there. And if you guys have any mind, please call me and and see what what else we can build the community with.
Any comments or questions from members of the community in the physical space or online? CNN, thank you, Rep. Appreciate it. And finally, Rep District Forty-Two, Representative Diamond Garcia. CNN in the physical or virtual space. Moving on to committee reports. Begin with parks.
Yeah, I'll just give a quick one here for more details. We'll do it at the next park meeting. But I remember at the last meeting, this is just for awareness of the board and the community. Remember at the last meeting, we're talking about additional delays for the comfort station in O'Leah Beach Park. So the whole issue comes down to, uh, the 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 comfort station and the shower having potential permit to go forward, but not the the play structure that was, uh, came along that we were trying to get included at that. And so what I had a correspondence with Ted Hayden, the Deputy Director of D P R. And he said that, you know, he was recommending that or he said that the Department of Planning said that if there's going to be multiple changes, that it's better to completely redo the environmental assessment and and that could take multiple years, right? And so I and he that's what Hayden Deputy Director was suggesting is we go that route. I said, I told him, no, I think that we should move forward with what we can, which is the comfort station and the showers, and then simultaneously do an application for that. So he said he's going to convene a meeting. I told about Alcoz, Reyes Oda, and and Topola and to be involved with that. So just a heads up on that, and hopefully we have good advances in the future.
Thank you, sir. Please, Rep.
So, um, Tuesday I had a meeting with Ted and was the E I A, is it the E I A? E I S or whatever it is, um, but I was asking him that when we doing the E I S, why don't we do the whole project, right? Why? Why are they taking small pieces at a time? If if they doing the the, um, bathroom area, right? For example, if if this whole room was the bathroom area, why and the playground is in the middle, why you need one another E I S for the playground? It's the whole area. So he don't even, I can tell you this, he didn't even go to O'Leah Beach Park. He don't even know where Po'ale Beach Park is. He never even come out in our community and see the plans. I I asked him some personal questions. He had no idea about our parks and where it is. So I'm asking him to bring out the bring out the architect, bring out the, um, the the designer of the places and and let's come together and see how we can get it done. No, just bring him on. Yeah, bring everybody out there because he he can BS us, guarantee. So, let's see. Thanks.
Thank you, Rep. Education Committee reports. Oh, nothing to report. Transportation? CNN.
So I I've been traveling for a couple of months. So but next month with Alex, uh, we'll get, I I got a letter back from, uh, D O T about something that I asked about on signage for our shared use paths. Um, and I haven't had a chance to look at that really closely, but I'm going to respond to that with him. And hopefully next month I will have more information on all of that, all that.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry about that.
Up nowhere, same thing for Omo or did Susan?
So I just want to, I want to give a shout out to Omo, uh, Oahu M P O, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. Owahou M P O dot org or you can email Owahou M P O, uh, at Owahou M P O dot org. And I I'm just, I'm just giving a shout out because the last this last year, they they've had new management kind of. And and they have really improved their meetings. They're actually fun to go to, um, and there's very informational. So so that's why I'm putting out that email, um, and the address to go look at their website or email them and say you want to get the agendas because the last month we just had, uh, it was a total information. It was all about safe routes to school. They had the the, um, the city, uh, Safe Routes to School Coordinator. Give a a long presentation on what she's doing and all the stuff that's going on. And then also that one of the Omo, uh, engineers talk about bike lanes and what all the different kind of bike lanes and how they're installed and where they are on the island. And it was just really cool. And and the the month before that was about accessibility. So I just want to put the shout out. I think the whole board should go to Omo means or at least, uh, look at their, uh, their presentations. Because you can, if you get the email, then you'll get everything, uh, sent to you. And you don't have to go to me, you can just look at the email.
Thanks, John.
Anyway, yeah, thank you. Oh, and I one more thing, I just want to go with Mike. La- last month, Mike Plomin mentioned that we should move these committee reports forward. And I want to agree with him totally. It was something that I was always thinking about. I was just waiting for the June election to see what happens, um, uh, so that the the new board, we could bring that up for the new board and and move these up on the agenda because, uh, we were wasting our time at the end of the meeting at almost ten o'clock. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. And and I think that's a great idea. I think many of the board members feel the same way. So and I think the community would feel the same way once we did that too. So especially since we have more committee report engagement now. So that's a great idea, John. Uh, public safety, community outreach, homeless outreach. CNN? Economic development? CNN? Climate change?
Looking to have a meeting in July.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman Cheng. Uh, Hawaiian affairs? CNN? And finally, military affairs. I know we have a report, Mr. Plomin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We did have a meeting finally last Wednesday. We had a good turnout. Thank you to the other board members and community participants that that, uh, that did or did show up. Uh, we had a presentation on military expansion in the Eba Twenty Three District, which actually there's been plenty of in the last decade and a half or so. And most of us kind of know about it, but we put it into one consolidated presentation such as the Nav Mag, Luululele Army and Navy munitions moving into our neighborhood with fifty-nine new magazines, right there behind West Lock Estates and also close to Iroquois Point, resulting in an access road to Iroquois Point, moving into the backyards of the Honolulu Street folks and, uh, Okaheah Street folks, uh, there. And, uh, we actually talked about the fact that there was a massive explosion at West Lock in nineteen forty-four that killed one hundred and sixty-three people, injured three hundred and ninety-six, sunk six L S Ts and three L C Ts. Uh, we've had shoreline hardening projects such as the Capilina Nine T Grinds and then a proposed steel sheet pile bulkhead at P R T F that at this point the Marines won't rule out. Significant extent expansion of the P R T F footprint, both in size of the ranges, number of ranges, and the missions that have, uh, changed in recent years, uh, significantly increasing, um, the amount of activity there and cutting off our access road, one of our access roads out of the neighborhood. And, uh, compromising a tsunami escape route and fire escape route. So a lot of this is has been done long after the Eba Beach and Iroquois Point neighborhoods were established. And so we kind of just wanted to address the narrative that, well, the range has been there and we grew up around it. And it's kind of not exactly the way it has worked. Uh, we also had a presentation by Wayne Tanaka, the the Chair of the Sierra Club Hawaii, addressing the importance of framing the lead contamination as a generational threat and the importance of testing where the people are and such as the beach park, the homes, the Poipu Place or the Poipu Poipoi Place Homes and the beach parks and and ensuring that we're also testing the reef and the and the fish and and whatnot. And hopefully the working group will will, uh, get that taken care of. Community concerns are there's still concerns about the uncontained nature of the range, bullets found in the park, suspecting questions about the surface danger zone. I see I'm at three minutes. So I'll I'll cut it there, and I know we're getting short on time as well. Great meeting. We'll have another one. Hopefully, uh, the Marines and Navy or Army can join us, uh, on a future one. Lots to talk about and, um, uh, a potential resolution, um, uh, coming forward with, uh, regarding the, uh, lead testing and supporting the working group. Thank you very much for your generous, uh, uh, time.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate the efforts of the Military Affairs Committee, and you're getting that up and running. Moving on to our announcements, next regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Same bat time, same bat channel, virtually via Webex and in person right here at Eba Beach Public Library. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday at six P M. And every second and fourth Friday at ten A M on Olalo Digital Forty-Nine. And with that, at nine forty-seven, we are adjourned.